Good morning. Good evening. I call the meeting of 6:13:23 to order. Before we start with our meeting, if any woman would like to speak, would you please fill out a green card and we will call on you when the time comes. We'll have a roll call, please, Mr. Ross.
Mrs. Brancato, here. Mrs. Crossen, here. Mrs. Islandberg, here. Mr. Gindhart, here. Mr. Godikson, present. Mr. Lyden, here. Mrs. Lynch, present. Mr. Martin, present. Mr. Sadowski, here. Nine members present.
We have no announcement. We will go to the pledge of allegiance, please. Would you please rise? Thank you. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We don't have any announcements. We will go to presentations. McDonald's School inside CSD. Our principal of McDonald's School, thank you.
So, hi, I'm Dr. G. I'm the principal of McDonald Elementary. Mr. Van Buren is here with me and some of our students. I do believe we have a video to play for you first. So I think we're going to watch that video first and then I'll present our Bulldog ambassadors.
So we have an A-gasoon relay, a baton relay, a thunderball relay, a hockey relay, a big ball relay, and whatever else there is. Good morning, McDonald Bulldog! Can you believe today is move up day? All right, this is a really special day for me. This is my first move up day as a principal. I'm so excited. Well, good year. Spidey, be joining us! So Spidey, I've been asking the students, why isn't already has its empty space right here? Do you know why? No, you don't know, but I have to say you know why. First thing, are we ready to move up? I don't know. I think they're ready. First thing, are you ready to move up? Second thing, are you ready to move through? Welcome to my first ever fifth grade ceremony as your proud principal. My name is Deanna Garetz Nadia and Mr. Van Buren and I welcome you today to our fifth grade ceremony. We're so happy you could join us today.
Thank you for joining us today to celebrate the end of an elementary era. To the teachers, administrators, and parents, thank you for making this year a fun and productive one. Without you, none of this would have happened.
Since kindergarten, you've been building all the foundational skills to prepare you for secondary school. And before you know it, it'll be 2030 and you'll be walking through the hallways just like you saw our senior graduates in 2023 do yesterday. It's going to fly by just like your years here in McDonald just flew by.
All right, I'd like to thank Mr. Ross for putting together that wonderful video for us. And I am the very proud principal this year. I got to experience a lot of successes this year at McDonald and that was just a wonderful capture of our end of year events. And we really had a great time at McDonald this year, didn't we? So what I wanted to do today was recognize our first ever Bulldog ambassadors. We have a few of them here tonight to represent the 2022-23 Bulldog ambassadors. So this is the first year that McDonald has held the position of ambassadors. Last year, the fourth grade teachers nominated students and these are some of our ambassadors who have joined us here today.
Fantastic.
So over the summer, what we did was we held a district-wide ambassador leadership training at McDonald Elementary along with Davis and Willowdale Elementary students. And we held a leadership camp where we learned all about what does it mean to be a Bulldog ambassador? What does that role mean? What will it look like for us as students with our first time going into it? And our students are going to tell you a little bit about what they did. And these were our ambassadors this year. So we'd just like to first let them introduce themselves and let us know how they felt about their role this year.
Hi, I'm Sophie McCullough and I'm going to go to Law College Middle School next year.
Hi, I'm Peyton Nightlinger and I'm going to Clinger Middle School next year.
Hi, I'm Emily Lorenz and I'm going to Clinger Middle School next year.
Hi, I'm Olivia Esti and I'm going to Law College next year.
Hi, I'm Henry Villa-Roll and I'm going to Law College next year.
Oh, that's wonderful.
So the rest of our ambassadors couldn't be here, but we will be presenting them with some certificates and just giving them our gratitude for some of the things they did. What was wonderful about our ambassadors is they helped us with many, many important events at our school, starting with our kindergarten orientation. So our ambassadors came in during our kindergarten orientation. They helped guide our brand-new kindergartners to their new classrooms. They helped parents to give building tours. They helped get our kindergartners on the buses every day, but also at the orientation. They were a critical part of our building. So anytime we had new students, which we have new students very often at McDonald, some of them speak different languages. Many of our ambassadors are multilingual, so they were able to help us give tours to new students and make our families feel more comfortable and welcome in our building. In addition to that, they were at some of our Title I events where they also assisted with giving parents building tours or just to guide people in the right direction. Peyton, am I forgetting anything? I think you can tell, you know, how the role was and let me know if I'm forgetting anything.
The role of being an ambassador was a very fun experience because when, last year, we never knew about ambassadors and this year, fourth grade teachers thought it was a good idea to put us in that position, which was, I think, a very good decision about everybody who was chosen this year.
Oh, wow.
Yes, our teachers definitely had the confidence in you of being responsible students and to demonstrate the four Bs plus one to all of our younger students. You were excellent leaders and we thank you. Mr. Van Buren and I have some certificates to present to you and we'd like to thank you for what you've done. So Emily? Sophie McCullough? Peyton Nightlinger? Olivia Esti? And Henry Villa-Roll? Henry, stay right here for a second. Do we have it? So one of our traditions at McDonald is to hand on the baton. So this baton is a little special. I'm going to let Mr. Van Buren tell you about this baton.
Good evening, everyone. This baton has been passed on for now four principals at McDonald. So Mrs. Mayhan, Keely Mayhan passed it to me when I became principal and I passed it to Mr. Ortiz and then Mr. Ortiz passed it to Dr. G. As you can also tell from the picture, we also use the baton when we retired the old Spike and moved to the new Spike. So literally in that picture, old Spike is giving the baton to new Spike and obviously they're giving them each other a warm embrace. So we're going to do the same thing with our ambassadors as a tradition. So I'm going to hand this baton to Henry, who's going to pass it on to our future ambassadors.
So this is Mackenzie Reinheimer in fourth grade and Jason Avalos Barahona in fifth grade. They are now among 40 of our new Bulldog ambassadors who have been selected in both fourth and fifth grade. So now we have more than doubled our ambassadors because it's been such an effective leadership role and a huge asset to our building. So we congratulate you for also being nominated by your teachers and we look forward to having you help us out this year as ambassadors. Thank you.
What were the four Bs that you said? You said four Bs? Can they let us know what they are?
You ready? Go ahead.
Be kind, be safe, be ready, be your best. And there's another plus-one fifth B, be proud to be a McDonald Bulldog.
Normally, they all shouted in unison. Thanks, Emily, though. I appreciate that. That was great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, students, thank you so very much for coming here. We wish you well in middle school. The ones that are remaining, thank you for your service and hope to see you all soon. Thank you.
Great job, guys.
Thank you. Wonderful presentation. Enjoy your summer. That was just absolutely wonderful. I believe it brings back memories. Next item on our agenda is 2.2 Spanish language program at McDonald's School. Mr. Gabriel, Dr. Best, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We are back again for the second round of the, talking about the McDonald Elementary School Spanish language program. At the board's request, we're going to jump right to the presentation and get into some context and clarity. And we'll start with this quote by Carl Sagan, "You have to know the past to understand the present." This is especially true as we look at the timeline of history and its effects on today's world and the world of tomorrow. And after the last meeting, at the board's request and at the parents' request, we're here tonight for some additional information, add some clarity to the presentation that we gave two weeks ago. We had attempted to summarize a lot of the information. We included links in the prior presentation, but I think after a lot of the conversation last week, it's worth sort of bringing that to light to make sure that the board has everything at their disposal to make a decision. Just so we are aware, at the end of the presentation is the first presentation, so I'm not going to go through all of these slides. Obviously, you've seen some of them already. And that is where we are. So, and let me just point out as well, in between last meeting and this meeting, we did have a meeting with the parents. We did a thought exchange, had another information light with the parents last week to kind of discuss the results of the thought exchange. I'll be sharing that later on in the presentation. So what we're hoping to do tonight was to clarify the purpose as stated in the original proposal for this program at McDonald, presented to and approved by the Board of School Directors. One of the challenges with the current administration is we weren't here when this was rolled out. So we can go back to what was written, presented, and board-approved in order to move forward. And so we're going to do that tonight. Again, it was all in the prior presentation, but it was linked out. Our attempt tonight was to bring that information into the slide deck. We wanted to outline information. This was a question pertaining to oversight of the building-based program at McDonald, share data on the program at McDonald, review the inconsistencies and what was said to be promised for the program. What we found, especially meeting further with the parents, was there was a lot of different interpretations of what was presented versus what they had shared, they were told, over the years. And then provide the board with options for consideration. That was a big ask of yours. So we have a couple of different options of what we can do, of what you can do in deciding on the program moving forward. And we want to share those options through three lenses. The impact of those options on class size, the impact of those options on resources, and the impact of those options on equitable opportunity for access to the program. You guys have seen the slide already. You know, we just really wanted to point out that, looking at the research, having a solid commitment to long-term financial resources in a two-to-three-year planning process is what's recommended. As we've mentioned before, we tried to do a lot in six months. And actually, when we went further into the meetings, the recommendation really didn't come until May with a start date of September. So really, you were talking a two-and-a-half-month span when a lot of this stuff, a lot of these to-do tasks were to be accomplished, which again, a lot of the challenges we're facing today and trying to explain this, do we have data? Is the data consistent? What was the actual outline of the program we've struggled with? And I think a lot of that can go back to, you know, trying to do a whole lot in a very short amount of time. The timeline, again, from idea first being shared with the building principal of McDonald in January of 2018 to a few months later, the board approving in May 22nd, the pilot, and then it being implemented in September. So very short, very short time and turnaround, which we'll get into in a little bit. So again, in the spirit of clarity, we really wanted to kind of share with the board what was formally presented. We can go back to what was presented, what was approved, what is part of our board docs. A motion was made in February of 2018 to approve an overnight trip for a principal, teacher, and board member to visit Bridgeport Elementary School in Oregon to help get a look at their two-way Spanish immersion program. You can see the minutes up there on the slide as well as who voted and what the final resolution was. A motion carrying 8-1 with Mrs. Brancato posed to the trip. March 27th, there was an informational presentation as a follow-up to the trip where Mr. Ortiz spoke about the visit to Oregon and those were the minutes there. There was a rationale in terms of Bridgeport serving a similar demographic and having the two-way immersion program helping to close the achievement gap. And then there's a little bit about Bridgeport on the right, that they were a K-5 elementary, a Title I school, very diverse student body, serving just under 500 students with the program. Next meeting, May 22nd, 2018, a larger presentation by Mr. Ortiz, the McDonald Elementary School principal, proposing a dual-language program pilot for the 2018-19 school year. The pilot would begin with one kindergarten class in the school. The students involved in the pilot will learn the curriculum in both English and Spanish. The composition of the class will include native English speakers and native Spanish speakers, balanced to 50%. As per the Pennsylvania Department of Education certification requirement, the teacher of record will need to be certified in both elementary, pre-K4, and rural languages, pre-K12, with a concentration in Spanish. The teacher will be employed by the district. As per the staffing policies and within the regular staffing process, the cost of the teacher's salary is not an additional cost. Rather, it is a reallocation of existing staffing needs for the 2018-19 school year. The motion was to approve the program with the upfront cost not to exceed $3,500. Mr. Ortiz, principal of McDonald Elementary School, spoke about the program, summarized the benefits, and outlined what needed to happen before the start of the next school year in September. Again, we're talking a two-to-three-year planning process that was at this point in about two-and-a-half months. The motion did carry 9-0-0. Now, I highlighted a few areas in red because this is what came up in conversation at the last meeting, whether it was one teacher, one classroom, or two classrooms. What did the 50% balance mean? Did that mean student-to-student ratio in terms of native Spanish speakers and native English speakers? Or did that mean the amount or percentage of language spoken in that particular class? So this slide is still the same board meeting and as I mentioned before, we had this linked last time. However, we brought screenshots from the slide deck out of the original slide deck to the forefront, so we didn't have to jump back and forth. This was a slide presented at that May 22nd meeting with a five-year plan to add and grow the program from 2018-19 to 22-23 with the plan ending this year in Cohort A's, what turns out to be fourth grade year. I know there was conversation last week about, we thought it was going to go through fifth grade. It was supposed to go through next year. Again, we can go back to what was presented and what was approved by the school board. The other piece to this slide, there was two more pieces I wanted to speak to. One, if you look across the top, there's a 90-10, 80-20, 70-30, 60-40, 50-50 number. In talking with the administration going through, our assumption is that should be percentage of language spoken in year one, year two, year three, English to Spanish. If you think about it, putting a bunch of students in a classroom with both languages being spoken, to jump right to 50-50 off the bat would be a little bit tougher for students that have no background in that other language. We did share this with the two teachers in the program. Neither one of them had seen this slide nor understood that that was supposed to be the plan. We did meet with the teachers. Cohort A started at about, so the makeup was about 41% native Spanish, 59% native English, so close to the 50-50 that we shared on the prior slide. But in terms of the percentage of language spoken, Cohort A started, we didn't know the first two years because the teacher wasn't here, but then it was about 70-30, 80-20, 90-10. So kind of went in the opposite direction of what was recommended and board-approved from the get-go. Cohort B started at about 50-50 and then slowly declined as well over the years. And again, I think we had pointed out that COVID had a pretty, and we'll show later on, COVID had a pretty big impact on that. The one piece that we wanted to add to this was clarity for the board in terms of actual true cost of a program like this. We could say that reallocation of staffing is a want, but we also believe that laying out a true picture of what a program like this would have cost or could have cost, because one of the recommendations based off the parent feedback was, let's go back to the program that was promised, was really... go back to the program that was promised, was really what, um, could have happened in terms of cost for teachers. Give me a second. So at minimum, each year we add a classroom, we want to look to add a dual-certified teacher, one teacher, if that teacher is dual-certified. If we don't have a dual-certified teacher, then you're looking at two teachers, one with an elementary background, one with a Spanish language background to teach those classes. So in reality, depending on the size and the scope of the number, while the reallocation at no cost is a, a hope, right? We're really looking at anywhere between, in total, over the five years, an $800,000 to $1.6 million investment, long-term, if that's, right? If we're looking to grow the program over time into a full program. This is also from the, uh, from the same slide deck for the May 22nd meeting. Again, you know, this is just outlining what had to happen between May 22nd and September, forming the dual-language committee, identifying and hiring bilingual and bilingual teaching professionals, determining student selection processes, selecting materials, et cetera, et cetera. They had to have a parent information letter go out of meeting, odds and procedures and communications regarding students' progress. The other thing to note here is, um, again, this is just the cost if it stays in one, one school, right? And, and being able to find dual-certified teachers on either side. So it's just something to keep in mind. Same slide deck, we had the proposed current costs were $3,500, proposed future costs were a total of about $9,400. Um, so a total of $12,900 was presented upfront on that same slide deck as a potential cost. So we have a $3,500 option, we have a $9,400 option, and speaking with the parents as well, uh, you know, they actually did have two classrooms that first year. Uh, so while one classroom was presented, forgot to mention that, they actually did have two classrooms at least for the first year. It just kind of worked out with staffing, just as a side note. Um, but actually, the board then approved in June and August were totals of the, over the $3,500 budget, 89, 29, 51. So right off the bat, we had budgeted $3,500, then maybe 12, but had already spent almost all that upfront. Uh, we went through a series of purchases, um, Cinderella's textbook for the pilot, another symposium conference in DC, uh, and then there was an informational presentation in April of 2019. So, you know, we're, we're working our way into now, um, wanting to move the recommendation into, into grade ones, it's a year later now. So this is the actual presentation for May 28th, a year later. The pilot started, it was implemented, we're now here in May. Uh, the dual-language program pilot, recommendation was to continue the pilot into grade one and fill the positions through repurposing and attrition. Continuation of the dual-language program pilot will require the district to recruit and hire a teacher with both PA cert elementary and PA Spanish. And again, absorbing the additional position by repurposing the elementary position through attrition. Uh, the motion was to approve the continuation, the motion passed 7-0-0. As you can see, the minutes, Mr. Ortiz shared the information about the first year of the program, explained the data on English literacy, Spanish literacy, as well as parent survey results, which we're going to share with you all. Uh, the data that was collected, again, this is taken straight out of that presentation from the 28th on board docs. Uh, we have ESGI, educational software for guiding instruction. Uh, the first slide shows a comparison of our dual-language program, English students in the yellow, to the percentage of students showing 80% mastery, uh, compared to the English-only classrooms in five skill areas, English letter, uh, name recognition, letter sound recognition, sight and word recognition, consonant about consonant words, and nonsense words. If you look at the comparison, in English letter recognition, English nonsense, the classes were about even, the dual-language classes, uh, were a little lower in terms of the percentage showing 80% mastery than the non, and then were exceeding the English-only classrooms in the English consonant about consonant words. Uh, year one of a program like this, you would expect a little bit of a drop, most likely, but we're looking at, you know, really growth and outperformance in only one-fifth, 20% of the overall, uh, success. What we don't know is the baseline. Uh, the only data that we were, uh, given is what was on the slide deck, so we don't know where they started compared to where they were at the time this data was shared. Uh, May 29th, uh, same meeting, the Spanish data shows the number of students showing 80% mastery. We're at about an average of, um, 48% of the students in the class were showing about 80% mastery in Spanish. So that was the data that we shared. Again, we don't have a baseline, uh, and this is a snapshot in time of where the dual-language students performed in terms of, uh, mastery in Spanish. So we had 10 ESL, this is again from the slide deck, 10 ESL Spanish students speaking in the, in the program, uh, eight of whom have shown growth. So we have a, a program that has helped support 10 of our native Spanish speakers, eight of 10 of our native Spanish speakers, and showing growth in the program, uh, in Spanish. So, uh, you know, we have, we do have a, an ELD program that supports our students coming over with an ESL background, uh, and we reported out in this slide on only 20% of our total student population, something to consider in the data. Same meeting, uh, we did poll parents at that time. Uh, of the 47 sets of parents, I think it was 21 responded, which was about 45% of the total number of parents, which is actually a pretty good number when you consider percentages in terms of surveys, 45 is high. Uh, out of the 45%, 70% of them reported that, uh, the program has benefited their child, has improved the child's attitude regarding cultural diversity, helped develop, uh, helped my child develop language proficiency in Spanish, uh, enjoys the program, and is overall satisfied with the program. Uh, same group that responded, the 45% responded to 21 parents, 77% shared, uh, these statements, "My son is a native Spanish speaker, but with the language program, his Spanish has improved. Having the opportunity for my child to learn a second language at this age, I feel he's doing very well and really enjoys it. Having my daughter come home and sing different songs in Spanish, or when I say something to her in English, she gets excited because she knows the Spanish version." So there's a lot of positive feedback from parents in that sense, from the 21 or so, about 45% that responded, uh, there was definitely some positive outcomes that were shared with, with the administration at the time. So the next steps in that same meeting, uh, is to extend the pilot into a second year, so keep it in kindergarten, and then add a classroom in, uh, first grade. Again, the plan was attrition. I think there, you know, our hope, our goal is to provide full transparency of, you could be talking about adding one to two teachers, right? If you can't find a dual-certified person versus, if you can't do it through attrition and reallocation, and you're adding a position, that would be, a dual-certified person would be plus one at 114. Uh, if it's two, because you'd have to hire both a Spanish and a, uh, general ed, then you're talking double that. Uh, here we are a year later, uh, so the end of year two of the program, May of 2020, there's a presentation given, dual-language program update, uh, with the recommendation at that time to remain in grades K and 1 for the 2021, 20, 2020, 2021 school year. There was no formal motion to continue the program, made nor approved. Uh, the minutes read that Mr. Ernesto Ortiz provided the board with an update on the dual-language program at McDonald Elementary School, explained the literacy and math data and recommendation for the school year. Now, please keep in mind, at this time, we were in May of COVID. Uh, we were starting to, where we had been fully out of school, uh, for a few months at this point. Uh, we had a lot of district leadership changes happening. Dr. Baugh was leaving, Dr. Polichak was leaving, we had Mr. Seidenberger transitioning in over the next month. Uh, there was just, there was a lot of movement, a lot going on from about May through August at this point. And a lot of our focus over the summer, those of us that were here, was trying to get the schools reopened in a way that was safe and helped to get kids back in a manner that would continue their education in the best way possible. So some of the data that was shared, I'm not going to walk you through all of it because there's a lot of slides of it that were shared, but now we're looking at MAP data, so it's a different assessment than what we saw last year. Uh, it's doing a lot of comparisons between our percentage of regular ed kids and how they're performing in these different areas on reading versus the, uh, dual-language students. We tried to give some, some summary slides, so the dual-language students, uh, 26% of them were below or approaching grade level in listening comprehension, where the non-dual-language students were 17% below or approaching. And then the dual-language students, uh, 74% met or exceeded, and for the non-dual-language, 81% met or exceeded. So we are still seeing a little bit of a, you know, a little bit of a discrepancy between how the one class is doing compared to the other. And again, I'm not going to walk you through all these slides, uh, but we have summarized for the board, um, sort of how this looks. And in most cases, the non-dual-language students have higher percentages of meeting or exceeding expected growth on MAP, on the reading MAP scores at each grade level than the, uh, than the dual-language students. So I'm just going to kind of take these, and again, this was just an initial recommendation, keeping the program in K1, uh, not moving it into second grade, with no real, no formal motion made nor approved. Uh, part of that rationale at the time, uh, was, you know, you had a cohort that was losing students, retention in Cohort A had been a concern. Uh, you know, we had some questions last time about, well, you know, no one told us why students were leaving. So, you know, when looking into things, there was, uh, transiguency going on, there was programming changes happening. Uh, the administration at one point had made a recommendation for about seven of the students just to go back to English, because their academics had been suffering so hard that they actually, the recommendation from the administration team at the time was to move the students out of the programs. There was a lot of different, uh, factors playing into this. So then June 9th, uh, there was not a planned update or a presentation, so this was the board meeting after the recommendation to keep the program in K1. Please keep in mind, the challenge of doing this was that that first-grade cohort that year, Cohort A, would then lose the program moving into second, if they were going to keep it in K1, because at the time, uh, the building administration was concerned and with the, the drop of the numbers and keeping it going in first grade, or in the second grade with that cohort, excuse me. So there was no update or motion planned, uh, the May 26th presentation was still on the table. Uh, these were minutes from the parent comments, and this was all over Zoom, if you remember, uh, that they really wanted the program to continue into grade two. Uh, Mr. Ross wrote an email from Jen Kotcher, community member, regarding the language immersion program at McDonald Elementary School. She's concerned about the program ending for the students who will be entering grade two in September, and asked why this opportunity is being taken away from the pilot class. Mr. Ross wrote an email from Tara Pellegrino, employee and community member, regarding the program, and asked the board to speak to the business manager to see if this is economically feasible. Um, I'm sorry, Mrs. Pellegrino said the board should consider the financial commitment required to provide a high-quality dual-language program, and asked the board to speak to the business manager to see if it was feasible. Mr. Ross wrote an email from Denise Stanley, community member, regarding the dual-language immersion program. She said the decision to end the program for students entering second grade should be reconsidered. She has concerns about what the class lost this year due to the teacher changes and then closing the school due to COVID-19. And then he read an email, Mr. Ross wrote an email from Randy Smith, community member, who said he did not want the dual-language program to be discontinued. Dr. Polichak responded, Mr. Ortiz was providing an update to this program at the June 23rd board meeting. So we had a recommendation to keep it in K1. Wait, hold a minute ahead. Right, and then we had the parent response, the, the next meeting, then the next meeting. Uh, the dual-language update came back around with the recommendation is to remain in grade one and continue into grade twos. The original recommendation was to remain in K1. Now that has changed, um, to remain in grade one and continue to grade two. Uh, the minutes read that Mr. Ernesto Ortiz provided an update on the dual-language program. He gave a short recap of what was presented at the May 26th meeting. He said the long-term recommendation now would be to have the dual-language program remain in first and second grade. He explained the program enrollment and long-term recommendations, uh, had to be considered, and Mr. Ortiz responded to questions from Mr. Dixon and Mr. Miller. Uh, Ms. Dr. Polichak responded to Mrs. Brancato's question about hiring another teacher and the impact on the budget, and to Mr. Miller's question about the dual-language program continuing beyond the pilot. Now again, the administration was not coming to this particular meeting with any motion to continue the program formally. Nothing was put on the table for board approval. However, Mr. Miller made a motion, seconded by Mr. Dixon, to ask the administration to take a look at the dual-language program for the next 30 days and to consider the needs to make this a full-fledged program of the district beginning of September 1. I would like to share, and they're linked here for the folks that are going to access this from home, but I'd like Mr. Ross to play. Uh, this is audio of the meeting. Mr. Greenwood, I think very well encapsulate, encapsulates the struggle we were having at that time, trying to figure out where this program sat. Mr. Ross, if you could just play the audio for... Okay, we can skip it then. Uh, basically, if you can listen to it at home, through the link. Uh, Mr. Greenwood's concerned, do you want to do it through that?
Yeah.
You can hold it.
Okay. Um, thank you, Mr. Goddard. And Andrew, I know you were up next, but Mr. Greenwood has his hand raised. Do you mind?
Oh, I would certainly yield the floor to Mr. Greenwood.
Go ahead, Mr. Greenwood.
With all due respect, right, and I appreciate greatly the impassioned discussion, uh, but would certainly caution, uh, the board about making something permanent that we have not financially walked through. Uh, the, the budget process, um, you know, certainly was a difficult process this year, and, and decisions were made, and, and the tax increase we backed down on, um, and, and, you know, to, to bring on a, a new teacher isn't, you know, is, 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 is an effort. Unfortunately, in these presentations, right, the, the business office wasn't consulted, so I can't offer, uh, my, my best homework on, on the subject to adequately share with the board, uh, what it'll cost this year, as well as what it'll cost, uh, if this goes from a pilot to a full program. Um, and, and would, uh, would advise against making that sort of motion, um, because it, it is, it is, it hasn't been, uh, I don't believe, well-thought-out.
Okay, Mr. Dixon.
So again, just, we're trying to provide context, right? Um, and I think if we take a look at the time of year, here we are in June of 2020, similar to the May challenge. We had one recommendation, we had parent feedback, we have another recommendation, um, and still an unclear picture of the future. Same meeting, uh, with the new recommendation, the remain in first grade and continue in the second. 34 students of Cohort A have been reduced to 27 students. What happened to the students, seven students no longer there, one moved, and a team decision involving parents, teacher, and building leaders to have the other six students focus on English instruction. So some of the attrition was due to academic need. Uh, and again, you know, a lot of this is coming out of the pandemic. Uh, to address those retention concerns, uh, recommendations from the building were to open up enrollment to Will, Dale, and Davis. Families interested in dual-language programs are going to continue, starting in kindergarten, and the commitment to hiring a Spanish teacher. Again, these were taken straight from the slide deck, and as Mr. Greenwood pointed out, there is no, um, real picture of cost. Uh, the motion that was made and put forward by Mr. Miller was to come back in 30 days of what it would be to make a full-fledged program. Uh, that did not happen. Uh, again, the transition of leadership and administration and the opening of schools in the middle of the pandemic took precedence. Uh, June 23rd, uh, there was also in conversation that fall, talking with the teachers, an email. Again, this was the struggle we all faced that spring, was what do we, or that fall, excuse me, coming off of the pandemic. This was an email from Mr. Ortiz, one of the teachers, about, what do I do? These kids are just getting back off of being out for this many months. We're half on Zoom, we're half in person, and at the time, collectively, uh, it was, let's focus on the health and wellness standpoint first, and we'll worry about instruction later. And so as we saw the percentage of Spanish to English dropping off over time, you know, there was a real need coming out of the pandemic to focus on just, uh, regular reading and writing and math and English, uh, let alone another language. So that brings us to tonight and, and the most recent timeline. Uh, we had a parent information night. Uh, again, timing wasn't great, we, we owned up to that. Uh, we made the, the motion, the recommendation, uh, led the last meeting to curtail the program. Board asked us to bring back more information, table the vote. Uh, we did meet with Dr. G and the dual-language teachers to discuss potential formats moving forward and got their input. We sent out a thought exchange to parents to garner their input. We'll be sharing those results in a minute. We did administer an iReady Spanish reading assessment, uh, that week to the students just to gauge a baseline again, you know, and we don't, you know, trying to keep going back to the, the upfront planning is why we're where we are. We're now in our third different assessment, uh, that's been rolled out. ESGI was rolled out, MAP was rolled out, now iReady was rolled out again. This is the This is the danger of not having a clear plan for a long-term consistent assessment with a new program in the district, which, you know, is, is why, is part of the struggle with where we are now. We did have a follow-up with the parents on June 6th to share out and discuss the results of the thought exchange and the different options that we were bringing forward. We didn't have everything tight, tight, but we did discuss some with them based off their feedback, some of the options we were going to be bringing forward. And then we're here tonight with our updated recommendations. So quick, quick little look at the parent feedback from the thought exchange from the past two weeks. We asked the question to inform our decision-making for continuing the program for your child's cohort. What would you like to see happen? We had 26 people participate with 43 thoughts and 569 ratings, which, as we've talked before with the board about, thought exchange, that's a pretty good, not only response rate, but the amount of ratings for a small group is obviously what we were engaging with, it was really high. The 26 respondents all answered in English, and then out of that, 26, 11 were identified in cohort A, and 13, if I can see behind everybody's heads, were cohort B. I'm sorry, I should say cohort B, grade three moving into grade four. Out of those that responded, 16 said they would be moving forward, three did not, five said other. We did a follow-up survey specifically through Google to the families. This doesn't capture actual names, but the Google survey did to really try to get a feel for out of the 16, yes, three, no, and five other, what are the real numbers for each cohort, so that we could project out class sizes and impact and our options we're going to be sharing with you. The other really came down to the feedback generally from parents was we want to wait and see what the program's going to look like to decide if we're going to move forward or not. So that, that was a pretty loud response for the other. The top three thoughts, and we all know a thought exchange kind of ranks the top three, takes everything based off of rankings, and the top three were transparent communication, establish a clear and shared vision for what the program will look like for next year, have an understanding about what options the future could be, and continuous Spanish lessons during school hours. So we've been trying to be better with our transparent communication. Again, I think we, having the meeting the night before the board meeting, we didn't, we didn't, we failed in that originally, but we're trying to do better. We had the meeting, had the thought exchange. Since then, I think tonight's conversation is really about number two, trying to figure out where the board wants to go with the program and what the options would be and what that's going to look like moving forward. And then we heard loud and clear that the Spanish lessons during school hours was a big want over our idea and talking with the teachers about doing an after-hour Spanish club. Four and five, so are of the thoughts, so those are your top three, this is the top five. The fourth thought was unique opportunity for Centennial, sets our district apart and prepares our students to serve others in our community now and in the future, and hire more staff for the programming, was the fifth most highest rated thought. So placing the necessary teams to have success, even if getting students to two to three year level of Spanish fluency. Again, going back to the staffing conversation, the way that it was presented to the board was one classroom and one teacher per year, and talking with the parents, they did have two teachers for a short time, and then that kind of changed after COVID. So just want to make it clear that there was different opinions on how many and what. The presentation called for one. I think the reality played out in two, at least for the first year or two, but some of that came down to staffing and numbers and we are having staff that were dual certified. Thoughts are now into themes, so the one theme is to continue in Spanish during school hours, during school hours, during school hours. We're hearing that loud and clear. The communication piece is still big. The vision, the opportunity, and helping parents understand the limitations of the program and discuss solutions. And then hiring more staff, if it's made a special, it should be a daily class, so we did, we will provide an option for it being a special, not a daily special, because that would have to replace something in place, but a special to the rotation. And then running the program in a way it was intended to present to us with half the day in Spanish and half in English. Again, I think we want to go back to, there should be a progression from 90-10 to 50-50 over time. So we did pull recent data from this particular cohort in May and June and did a class comparison. So for the dual language versus non-dual language classes in reading for grade three, the dual language students were 74% above grade level, early on or mid or above, and non-dual language students were 49% above. And then one grade level to multiple below, 26% of the dual language students below, 50% of the non-dual language students were below. So in this case, it shows that dual language students in English did a better job in grade three overall compared to the, the non-dual language students. For math, we see a similar pattern, 16% of the dual language students are above, early on, mid or above grade level, 23% of the non-duals are above, so this is sort of the reverse. And then 80% of the dual language students as a class overall are below in grade three in mathematics versus 70% for non-dual language students. For grade four, it's about even, it's about 45, 44, and 55, 57. So we don't see one particular cohort outperforming the other so much than the other in reading, and in grade four in math, about 53% of the dual language students are above and 35% are above. For the non-dual language, 47 students, 47% of the dual language students are below, 66 of the non are below. We also have the assessment of Spanish reading for a baseline placement at this point. Again, having inconsistent data over the years really speaks to that. So if we take a look at this, we have, out of the 12 students that partially met or met grade level expectations in reading and Spanish, nine are native Spanish speakers, three are native English speakers. And on the reverse, not meeting grade level expectations, only one was a native Spanish speaker and nine were native English speakers. So in a program, as we had mentioned in the last presentation, that really students should be leaving with better academics, better Spanish, that this is showing that that hasn't been the case. Similarly, out of the 16, it's a little bit closer, but it's also a smaller class. Six native Spanish speakers are partially meeting or meeting grade level expectations, and four native English speakers are, whereas, and this is for grade four, so this is the cohort that's been an extra year, so to speak, and then two native Spanish speakers were not met grade level expectations, and four native English speakers were not in reading in Spanish in grade four. So here are the options. So option one is still to curtail the program, and it's still the recommendation of the administration. One of the things we wanted to present to the board was that, you know, there are roughly 43 students in this program. We also want to share with you the impact on the other 846 McDonald students that these options would have, as well as the 1,490 other elementary students across all three buildings, which is why we're approaching this from the lenses of class size, equity of access, and resources. So if we were to keep, so if we were to curtail the program based off the numbers as of the 19th of May, grade four at McDonald, at that time, had 153 students. We would have six general education classes averaging 25.5 students per class with a cap of 29. That means to add a new teacher would take 21 new students to enter fourth grade to trigger a teacher. But we would have average class size of 25.5 across evenly across six sections. In grade five, we have 123 students, so five sections averaging 24.6 with 22 new students triggering an FTE. Also, the current teachers would stay in their respective grade, which would provide equitable opportunities for programming for all students across both, all general ed students, period. Allow for continuity of staffing, curriculum, assessment, instruction, PD, and student learning, would remain cost neutral because we wouldn't be adding any different curriculum materials from this look unless we get a huge influx of students. Doesn't look like any staffing implications. On average, over the past few years, we're only, we've only been adding about four to five new students in each grade level, so, you know, we're not concerned about that triggering a teacher necessarily, based if you look back over the past two years. Would decrease the likelihood of teacher attrition, and then it would allow all students moving into grade five to take advantage of the departmentalized structure that's built into the schedule. We did keep grade five departmentalized so that students can experience different teachers throughout their fifth grade year and not be self-contained with one teacher. That gives them that little bit of a stepping stone into what they'll experience in middle school, where they're not only changing teachers, but, but classes of students. So not moving forward the program, every student would get access to that, that experience. If we maintain the current program, again, thinking about not just the 43 students in the program, but all the students across the board, the fourth grade, we would have one dual language class of 23 students, and then five non-dual language sections of 26 students. It would take 16 new students to trigger a new FTE if necessary, if we lose, or if we, if we gain a number of students. Again, only gaining four to five a year is not a huge concern, but we wanted it up there as a, you know, a potential cost. Grade five, it would be one section of 16 and then four sections of 26.5. So the fifth grade cohort would be a bit more unbalanced, about a 10 student difference between the four sections of 26 and the one section of 16, assuming all 16 of those commit to stay. We still don't have a clear picture of that based off of the, the survey and feedback. Parents did ask, and so we are going to present that the decisions could be made on each cohort separately. So to move the program forward, you could make, you could decide to keep both cohorts together and move them from third into fourth and fourth into fifth, or only move one cohort over the other. That parents had asked that we share that, so we're sharing that. The current teachers would each move to a new grade level, which would impact 130 kids in grade four and 107 students in grade five, general education, non-dual language students. How? This would limit opportunity for access for all students to take part in the program. It would require a current grade five gen ed teacher to get bumped to grade three. Right, we'd have to create space for the teacher coming up who's certified to teach. So it would impact the students in, so fifth grade teachers could be experienced, maybe not. Either way, gets moved to grade three, and then students coming into grade three would get a teacher potentially brand-new to grade three. Would require our two teachers to learn a new math, new science, new social studies, new reading, language arts program for the fourth or fifth straight year in a row. One of the teachers, our grade four teacher, was one of our wit and wisdom pilot teachers in grade four, I think hoping that she would stay in grade four. Our hope is with the pilot teachers to use them as the experts in that grade level to then help do turnaround training. We would lose that ability as a district to leverage her expertise in wit and wisdom. And it would deny the cohort A, grade five, dual language students for moving into their ability to take advantage of departmentalization, right? So they would stay self-contained without the experience, without the experience of meeting and experiencing other teachers across grade five. And we've also, we're struggling with classroom space issues at McDonald. We've already had to displace the Bucksey U courses because of classes going up and class sizes going up. So doing this would cause, you know, a section of 16 and then larger sections in the other classrooms of close to 26. So I'm going to have Dr. Best speak to a couple other options with some adjustments, and then based off of the parent feedback.
Good evening. As Mr. Gabriel shared, there, there are different options we wanted to highlight tonight, as well as, as potential concerns. On the slide you're looking at right now, to the left, the potential for staff attrition. We want the board to understand that if there is attrition from staff, there's no guarantee that we're able to hire a replacement that is dual certified, which could mean that each staff member that leaves, one FTE goes out, it could require two FTEs coming in to replace one person. One certified appropriately to teach at the elementary level, the other certified to teach Spanish. The other pieces we'd be concerned with regarding attrition are summertime cutoff dates. There, there is a turnaround time to hiring staff when staff members leave. We're required to post all positions for 10 days following that, the, the interview and recruitment process runs, and then the onboarding process. We believe July 10th would be, you know, probably on the later end of a cutoff that we could sustain and still try to turn around staffing. However, if we were not able to, in the event of attrition, if we were not able to find people certified to teach this program, we would need to curtail the program because we wouldn't, we simply wouldn't have a Spanish-speaking teacher and a Spanish-certified teacher. In that case, the students would be redistributed over the existing sections. On the right-hand side, we wanted to share with the board what expansion would look like across the elementary schools, as that was one of the recommendations made back on June 23rd of 2020. We would recommend a planning period, a pause and a two to three-year planning period if we were to expand across all of our elementary schools, as was recommended three years ago. You can see the associated cost there with materials and professional development that it would take to get the program up and running. And the way we see it, there would be two options for that. One would be to hub a program in each elementary school, which would mean adding one to two FTEs per building or three to six per year, depending on certifications, in order to build a program from kindergarten on up. Or option two would be to hub a program in one building and transport kids from the other two schools there. Willowdale right now has more space available than the other two elementary schools, so that would be the recommendation if we were to hub the program in one school. And you can see the, the associated transportation costs that we were able to ballpark that would, that would go with that. Some considerations down towards the bottom of the screen there, again, the ongoing challenge of finding certified teachers. Over the last six years, Pennsylvania has issued less than 100 Level One Spanish certificates across the Commonwealth per year. When you think about the fact that there's 500 school districts in Pennsylvania, that, that's where our low confidence in being able to staff the positions comes from. The other piece would be figuring out if we were to hub the program or have it in all three schools, what would, what would we cap the program at if there were an explosion of interest? You know, would there be a lottery? How would we, would it be first come, first served? Those are things we'd have to work out if we were to expand the program in the future. The other two pieces, and this is based on feedback that we received from the parents and the want to have the program, to have Spanish instruction remain within the school day, there are two different options we feel like could be provided. One would be to add exploratory Spanish as a specials class, which would take, currently we have a six-day rotation at the elementary level for their specials, art, gym, music, and so forth. We could add a seventh special, which would offer Spanish instruction to all students K to five. That would require us to add an FTE in each building certified in Spanish. It would also lessen the amount, the frequency with which the other classes are seen. So students would have art less frequently, they would have phys ed less frequently, they would have music less frequently, library and so forth. And each student in the building would then receive approximately 40 minutes of Spanish instruction once every seven days. The other option that we, we thought about was the win period, which is built into the new elementary schedule that we'll be implementing next year, currently has a six-day rotation. Three of the days are dedicated towards reading and language arts, two of the days towards math, and the sixth day is dedicated towards social and emotional and academic learning. We could make one of the days in that cycle for Spanish instruction, which would provide 30 minutes of Spanish instruction once every six days for the students currently in the dual language program. In order to do that, to make that happen, we still would have to make the move that Mr. Gabriel mentioned of moving a teacher from fourth grade to fifth grade to have the appropriately certified person in that grade level who would have win at the same time as cohort A, and we'd also have to move the other teacher from third grade to fourth grade for the same reason, so that they're in the grade level where the win period is happening, so that they're able to offer that. If they remained in their current grade levels, the win period they'd have would not match up with the grade level of the students in the program, and they wouldn't be available at that time to offer it for them. So those were the, during the school day options that we were able to come up with if the program were to be curtailed, based on the feedback we received about the after-school option.
So if you remember from the thought exchange, one of the other feedback components of very highly ranked, one was running the program the way it was intended to present to us with half-day in Spanish and half in English. And this goes back to, I think, where we started today, which was a two-year, three, two, three-year recommendation for planning for long-term sustainability, material, staffing, and we have, we have costs, I'm not going to read them to you, but annual materials, the cost, professional learning, additional staff, transportation if we, if we house it in one building, as Dr. Best alluded to earlier, and then the ongoing challenges. So, you know, there are a lot of, lot of, lot of, a lot of information to consider in making a decision. So, you know, there are a lot of, a lot of information to consider in making a decision. So to come back to the original reason we're here, you know, none of us believe that a dual-language program if done well is invaluable. I don't think that's being disputed here. I think what we're trying to share is what was set out to be put in place hasn't happened. And I think trying to go back to the lack of clarity around what was presented to and approved in the Board minutes versus what we were told, people were told and shared with in terms of years and numbers and classes, and the teachers were unsure of things, that parents had certain things that they were told, and again, I'm not saying anyone's right or wrong. I think everybody's telling the truth. But what we can go off of right now is what was presented to the Board and approved formally. And so in that sense, we wanted to clarify the purpose stated in the original proposal of what was presented to and approved by the Board Directors with clarity on actual cost. And again, the oversight of this was very largely building-based for the majority of the program. We shared the data. I think the data shows that the program hasn't gotten our students to where we had hoped, or whenever this got put in place originally, it had hoped to be. Review the inconsistencies in what was said to be promised versus what we know is Board-approved and presented and moved forward, and then provide the Board with options for all three. So again, our recommendation is still what it was two weeks ago, is to curtail the program and offer some out-of-school Spanish clubs. We know that doesn't meet the parents' ask to keep it in hours. We offered options for the Board to consider during the day, which would be maintain the current program, its impact on class size and cost, the potential domino effects of what this will do in terms of all the other students in the buildings, what happens if we lose staff, what happens if we look to expand, if we try it out as an in-district exploratory special or with win time. Again, just trying to provide the Board with information to make a decision. So I don't think any of us have the appetite to go all in back to what was supposed to be set up five years ago, because you're talking a multi-year recommendation and a lot of money to consider over time. So that's where we've landed with this. Any questions?
Yes. Mrs. Brenn-Carter. So this program started in 2018. We have updates up till 2020. Has everybody been asleep since 2020? Why are we just being updated three years later? None of this was told to us, that the program was failing, right? So three years, we hear nothing. Who's in charge of that? There has to be somebody that's in charge of that. Now, I'm not saying you've got to give me a name. I'm just saying, for three years, was everybody sleeping? If I were these parents, I would be furious, because we promised these kids, we promised these families, and we let them down. So somebody dropped the ball. And I don't know what everybody else does. If you're wrong, you say I'm wrong. I dropped the ball, whoever did. But this is ridiculous that we're doing these to these families. Like, I just can't even imagine somebody not, we really, we had no, you saw, you told us, no updates for three years. So, well, I mean, who's in charge of that? Why were there no updates?
I got it, Anthony. I got it, Anthony. One is, I'm ashamed that we're going to go to gaslighting here, and that's my humble opinion. The answer is, it's only been really two years. The presentation said that we went into COVID and the focus was on trying to deal with COVID and recover from COVID. That was the all-in focus. You've gotten presentations about our lack of alignment, our curricular issues, all kinds of things over and over again. So that is the answer to the question. The other comment that was made, it was predominantly building-based. I'm going to start with the parent's most highly rated comment. First, I'm going to say this. When I went over this information, I was appalled. I went to battle in Texas over dual-language. To maintain it, to offer it, to keep it, this was never rolled out as a dual-language program at all. It was a travesty. And I would tell you, I would be taking one of my administrators to task over the way this was done. Misinformation was given to the Board, the way data was given. That jumped out at me. Inconsistencies with information shared with parents and presented here, emotional reaction to change when something was presented, heated the moment, changing a recommendation. There was no transparent from the get-go. There was no keeping informed with accurate information from the get-go. There was no real-time information. It was flawed from the start based on the cost presentation, the staffing, staffing based on attrition for a dual-certified person, which is a unicorn to find. Less than 100 certificates are given to Spanish teachers in the Commonwealth a year, 500 districts, but a lot of those go to secondary. Let's add that in there. The instructional model was never consistently rolled out and implemented. There is two parts of dual-language. The student population makeup and instructional model. It was clear from that slide, it was starting as a 90/10, working its way up to 50/50. The idea that the class was supposed to be 50/50 split of English-speaking students and native Spanish-speaking students. That's what was presented to the Board. And at minimum, you've got to have at least a third of the students in one language if you don't have 50/50. What was the district goal? I still can't find it. But the dual-language goal is clear. Students to be fluent in two languages. That did not happen, and it still doesn't happen, because none of our English-speaking students are speaking Spanish at the level they should now. The people who benefited from the data have been our Spanish-speaking students. So to me, it rests at the building level and the previous two central offices. I'll just call it like I see it.
Okay, so...
That's the answer to your question.
Okay, so first of all...
You didn't get update for two years because we were trying to deal with COVID.
Wait a second. So I don't know what the gaslighting was about, but if that was directed at me, that's not what I'm doing. I'm asking a direct question. So it is three years, and yes, you can blame previous administration, that's normally what people do.
Not blaming, just answering your question.
Okay. So what I'm saying to you...
All right, let's wrap this up a little bit.
But I have a question, Mrs....
I have a question too, and I'm waiting for you.
Okay.
Okay. Go ahead. Wow, wow, I know.
Yes, I'm trying to, just trying to get the words out.
Okay, good.
So 2020, you're saying 2020, we were recovering. You're saying it rests at the building level. And Dr. Bedden, I agree that it's not, that it comes from the building level. But you're the top of the food chain. How come you didn't know? That's very distressing that the superintendent isn't given that information. And we all know, in any business, even though it falls underneath, it's the guy at the top that is ultimately responsible. And I'm not trying to be mean, I'm just saying.
Gaslighting is what you're doing by...
I'm not. I'm asking an honest question. If you can't handle honesty, I'm sorry.
But that's not a...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
That is gaslighting because you're focusing on trying to find blame.
You are the boss, and you should know.
You're trying to focus on blame. I did know. That's the reason I had...
Then why did you tell us?
Because we were focused on trying to get our students...
For three years?
Ladies and gentlemen...
That's the answer to your question, okay?
Well, you should have told us, and these parents should have known. That's disgraceful.
This is not how we're supposed to conduct a Board meeting. This is out of control, and it's not my fault. An individual Board member should address the President of the Board. That has not happened. Thank you for the history. I wrote it down briefly. This pilot program went through three superintendents, Dr. Monday, Dr. Ball, Dr. Bedden. This program went through two changes in School Board. This program went through two principals at McDonald. Mr. Gabriel, I think it's grossly unfair that you're taking the blame for three superintendents, two principals, and two School Boards. Your presentation was very, very good. The information that we received online for this agenda went through the whole process of this program. I've never seen a pilot program in my 17 years on the Board be like this one with no end date, et cetera. Are there any other comments?
Can I just...
Ms. Ross, please.
I just wanted to make sure that the district has had a chance to speak with all the parents and guardians that were involved, and everyone had a chance to respond.
Yes, we held a parent meeting on June 6th, shared the Thought Exchange data and at that time, as much as we could, about the rough drafts of the recommendations we had moving forward.
Thank you.
And actually added the win recommendation back in. We hadn't had that originally in our presentation for tonight, but after we're talking with the parents, the win recommendation back in.
Thank you.
Ms. Allenberg. I just wanted to say that I'm sure that at the initial onset of this program, the intention was nothing but good and with a positive outlook on what could be accomplished. It does seem to me glaringly, obviously, that some details were overlooked or even we thought will catch up to them. There were a lot of variables that came into play that did not happen, and here we are. I do appreciate the transparency that you've given in this presentation, trying to remind us of what has taken place over several years. So I want to thank you for that and thank you for your courage to stand up and bring this to us. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
The concern that I see is, we also had the major impact of COVID. It had a complete change in the focus. The program, you know, got lost because it couldn't be taught from home to home. So giving the program a real chance, you know, as Dr. Bedden said, you know, he is a very strong advocate for a dual-language program. I think we need to give this a chance to finish and conclude without ending it this year.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Gabriel, thank you. Dr. Best, thank you. Next item on our agenda is 2.3 Pandoria Panamonia Data Warehouse, Mr. Gabriel and Ms. Oshkins. And I know I'm butchering your name, so please excuse me.
Miss O.
Yes.
Miss O, we can do that. So I'll let Mr. Ross pull up the presentation on Panorama, which we are recommending tonight for approval as our new data warehouse in the district. So again, I will jump to, at the Board's request from earlier, right to the meat of the presentation. So what is a data warehouse? Data warehouse is a type of data management system that helps schools facilitate the seamless exchange of data, helps integrate relevant applications, and stores all data prepared for research reporting and advanced analytics. Really, it helps us make decisions for our students, for placement, for programming, for instructional tools, budget. A lot of what we do is based off of the types of analytics we can run. Again, it takes out the emotion of decision-making sometimes and gets right at a, are we getting return on investment and return on instruction on what we're using and putting in place for students, whether that's helping students grow and improve and/or whether we purchase materials moving forward. So where have we been? In May 2020, the Board approved the purchase of Who Knew It, which has been our data warehouse system over the past three years. It was going well for about the first year, and then Power School, which is a large ed tech company, acquired Who Knew It, and almost immediately, we started to experience delays in support, implementation, and performance issues. So decrease in effectiveness in the platform's features, customer service, PD functionality. So our three-year contract, when we fought, we fought for two years to help get things up and running. It was functional, but not to the level that, again, it was promised, we were promised. So our three-year contract was up this year. We had a conversation administratively and with Ms. Oshinsky here now, who's helping to run our MTSS process for interventions with students. She worked very closely with Ms. Jennings, our data assessment specialist, to put out an RFP, bring in a number of warehouses to vet, get a committee together, and really take a look at the different programs that are out there. And tonight, we are bringing Panorama to the Board for approval. So I'll let Ms. Oshinsky explain the timeline.
Good evening. I'm going to walk you a little bit through what our timeline looked like for deciding upon Panorama as our recommendation. This process actually started prior to me being hired, when the RFP was posted in January. I came on the last week of February, and so my first task was to help put this committee together to look at a data warehouse. As a team, we built a committee of teachers, staff members, and administrators, and then we set up data warehouse demonstrations for them to view and to be a part of those presentations and ask questions of those companies and those data warehouses. After those presentations, we sent a survey out just to get pros, cons, and questions that our staff still had, and just to kind of get a feel for which direction we were leaning in and which data warehouse would meet our needs that we had identified as a committee. After that survey, what we did is really compiled the list of questions that everybody had, and rather than taking that back to the data warehouses, I spent the month of, the months of April and May, reaching out to local districts in Bucks County and in the surrounding counties who actually used the top two data warehouses that we had landed on. We had meetings with them, we walked through our teachers' questions, and something that we found that we thought was very interesting is the data warehouse that was being utilized, that was one of our top two contenders, being utilized by most of the local districts, was heavily underutilized, and they weren't using certain portions that they had paid for, which then became a red flag for us to dig a little bit deeper into that. After those meetings with local districts, through May, we presented a recommendation for Panorama because they answered our questions and they were able to give us a good kind of background of what the warehouse would provide for Centennial, and it met all of our needs at that time. So that kind of brings us to tonight, which is bringing Panorama to you guys for approval. Some quick facts about Panorama that were identified by the committee as major benefits is that there is an automatic attendance behavior and academic sync from Skyward. So anytime we enter information about students into Skyward, it will automatically sync that night if anything's changed, whether it's contact information, address, anything that's entered into Skyward will automatically sync to Panorama for us, which takes that burden off of teachers and them not having to do double entry. There's a climate and culture and SEL survey attached to Panorama that really seamlessly pulls in some information into the MTSS data platform, which we will show you what that looks like. It helps us to identify at-risk students who might need support in real time, and that's a really big benefit to us to have that early warning system. And there's features in the warehouse that help us plan interventions and monitor supports for students. The most heavily designed feature of a data warehouse, and the one thing that we really loved about Panorama is that there is immediate and easy-to-read data for teachers. So this is a platform that teachers can use daily. They can click buttons and see real-time data on students, and it's immediate at their fingertips. They don't have to search in multiple places to look for information on students and to share information with parents. And then it gives us a tiered access to reports. So there is administrative, district access, principal access on the school level, and teacher access. So there's a lot of different tiers to the data that it would provide for us. This is the plus delta list that our committee had identified. These are the positives that the committee really loved about Panorama. A lot of this I just went over in the last slide, but some of the other things that you can see are that there are links to outside resources we can add to the platform. There's a big MTSS feature, and it does help us group students for those win times and those intervention supports. The delta list, there were only three things that teachers were concerned about with this platform. And what we did here is, in blue, we actually took these concerns back to Panorama and asked, what can we do about these? Because these are the three things we need that you are not providing right now. And so in blue, these were their responses. So in our opinion, this turns these possible negatives into that plus side for us. So one is that we weren't able to view the reports in spreadsheets. It looked like during their demo that we could only see a PDF, and we wanted our principals and our teachers to be able to disaggregate and play with the data a little bit. They provide that option, so it was just something we didn't see in the demos. The biggest piece that we were looking for is a parent access portion for parents to be able to see the data that we have on their students. This year, this coming school year, Panorama is actually providing a parent access portion to their platform. So anytime a student is... So anytime a student is put into an intervention plan, a secure link can be shared with the parent, so parents can see any data that we are entering about their students, whether it be anecdotal or progress monitoring data for an intervention that we're providing. And then they are working on a feature for us to be able to batch print reports so that we can attach them to report cards, so parents can see all of the student data that we are collecting during those meetings and those report card conferences. This is what a sample student report would look like on Panorama. This is something that we wanted to showcase for you so you can see what the platform would actually look like and how easy to use it is for our teachers and our staff. At the top, you see the student view. All of that demographic information is pulled directly from Skyward, so that can change as we enter new information. That demographic information will change. On the right-hand side, you see those colored boxes, academics, attendance, behavior, and SEL. Every student will have these indicators, and it will show the progression of the student throughout the school year so that we can easily identify areas where students might be struggling or might need extra support, and that automatically changes based on the data that's put into the platform. On the left, that helps us to log parent communication, that helps us to log meetings, so that there is never really a time where I'm looking at a student's profile. I can see if a teacher called yesterday, so that we're not overloading parents with information. We can see what kind of information has been entered on students. And then in the bottom, you'll see that intervention plan section. That's just a snapshot of what it would look like when a student is placed in an intervention plan and how easy to read that data is. So we'll see over time, as progress monitoring data is put in, how the student is progressing towards their goals. And all of these are collapsible and expandable, so as students have data that is entered into iReady and all these other platforms that we are using, it will automatically show up on the student page. The main goal being that when we open a student page, it's a whole child picture, and we're not just looking at one number to define a decision that we might be making or a conversation. And when we're having conversations with parents, we're able to show them a whole snapshot on how their student is performing, not just a grade or a test score.
And just to be clear, that information right now, if you go back to the quick facts, some of this is available currently, some is not. And the available information that we have now is all over the place. Some of it is in the current data warehouse, although there's questions on how frequent it's been updated, so we're not sure if it's the most current. And then some of it sits in people's spreadsheets. So there's a lot of different person power to kind of manipulate, pull together, and manage versus having everything in one spot as a one-stop shop for teachers. So if you look as well, we did some comparisons, and we did include this in the board updates, the weekly updates to the board. This would save by moving to this platform. It's a better functioning platform than what we have currently. It gives us more options, and it also comes at a savings for reallocation. Not only are we adding, but we're also paying less over time. Questions? Yes?
Hi. Thank you for that presentation. So questions? My first question was, you had talked about identifying students at risk. Is that based on like test scores?
That's a great question. I can just answer that based off, it can really be any indicator that we put into the platform. So as a district, we can decide what those at-risk scores might look like. In high school, it can be at-risk for not graduating or at-risk for failing a course working towards graduation. In elementary school and middle school, it could be at-risk for failing a course, at-risk for dropping below an average score within reading or math based on iReady. So there's multiple indicators. We would just press that box, and it would show us what students are maybe struggling in that area based on their progress monitoring, their iReady, and their grades.
Okay.
There's also an attendance measure, so we can do an at-risk for falling below attendance metrics. Like if students start missing multiple days in a row, it will flag those students for us to make sure that we're communicating with the families and supporting them.
Okay. And you talked about reports. So my question regarding this, knowing that this basically is software, okay? Is there a mechanism in place when you come across a situation where you have a report that's needed, but it isn't presented, it's not available, but it's something that the district would benefit from? Is there a package already in place in this pricing that allows for those expansions? Or is that something that's a one-and-done kind of thing where you have to pay additional for that?
So everything, we can pull any reports with the data needed. If there is something additional, we will have a team assigned to us. So if there are things that we need, we can request it. If they can do it immediately, they will provide it. If not, I mean, I guess just depending on what the data warehouse company, what Panorama is able to provide. I think that's what we found with most of them, that some will create those if it's a heavily requested item from districts, that they'll create access to that report. Otherwise, there are ways for us to still maintain that data and pull those reports on our own. But most of the reports we dug in as deeply as possible, most of the reports that we need, we are able to pull, yes.
So another question I had was, you had referenced playing with data. Does it export to another platform like Excel or something like that where you're able to manipulate and put things in order in the manner that is helpful?
Yes. Any report that we're able to pull as a PDF, we can also pull as a spreadsheet and pull that out into Excel so that we are able to look at that and move things around as needed. Yes.
As far as input is concerned, do you feel that going through this process, things are intuitive and it will be easy for our staff and our teachers to adopt this?
Yes, as we had a lot of teachers and staff on the committee to make sure, and that was one of their number-one indicators of liking this platform, is it looks easy for us, so yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Garson.
Question though, what went wrong with Power School? Because Power School was supposed to do the exact same thing.
The original product we purchased was not owned by Power School at that time. Power School then bought the product that we had had, and things went downhill. This is the second district I've been in where we had a fully functioning data warehouse that Power School bought, and it just sort of stopped being effective.
Do we not run a risk, you know, with the same thing happening with Panorama?
Talk about they're more established.
Yeah, I think that what we did ask that question, and that has been a concern that we have navigated around, I think what we landed on with Panorama, especially as opposed to a lot of the other data warehouses we were looking at, is they have been established nationwide for quite some time. They started as a survey company and have kind of broadened their product into this data warehouse. They have been Panorama for longer than most of the other data warehouses have been around, so we feel confident that this is the best choice and that they're going, they are more likely to remain within that because of their established reputation nationwide than some of these others that are smaller platforms that are more concentrated into smaller areas.
How well does this integrate with moving the stuff from Power School to Panorama now?
Yep, we explored that very easily. They're able to move everything over within a six-week time period, and during that time, we would be able to have accounts to make sure that we were in there accessing and able to still see the data as they moved it over.
Is it also used throughout the county, or is it Centennial primarily at this time?
In the county, there is no other school district that is using Panorama as a full data warehouse, but there are districts using pieces of it. There are districts just outside. I've consulted with a few that are kind of in the Philadelphia area and in neighboring counties that are using it as a whole and are very satisfied with the product.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Ginnhart.
What's the average use time of the district you checked with? How long they've had it, their experience level with it?
For Panorama, about two years. They've been rolling out the product. They're in year two of rolling it out, and so they've tested out most of the features. They're actually adding features on that Panorama offers. And I think that was probably about comparable to what the other districts were using some of these other platforms as well. So about two years has been the average use recently that we've been able to find. I know for the survey aspect, there was one that was in like year four of using their surveys. They just haven't expanded to using the rest of the product because they have another.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is 2.4 2023-2024 Final Budget Presentation. Mr. Greenwood.
All right. Good evening, everyone. We have a short, Mr. Martin, a short budget presentation. I'm going to take the lead of my colleague Anthony, and I'm going to jump through the first slides once we get to the slide. There we go. All right, there's the jump. And we'll start first at a comparison of the last budget on May 23rd, when we talked about the health care increases and the changes that happened from when the budget was set at 2.9 as a, at the proposed stage in April to May 23rd. We had an additional expense, a deficit shown of $774,000. Between May 23rd and June 13th, where we sit today, we have reduced departmental expenses by $154,768 by working through that process, and we have transferred $619,000 to offset the deficit to bring us to a break-even budget. So for the fourth year in a row, we will have, we have a budget that is less than the Act One guidance. This year, it is by far at 1.2% below the Act One guidance. That is the largest separation that we have shown to date. It has a, the budget is based on the assessed value of $565,328,010. That was the May report. The June and final report came out yesterday, and there was no change, so that number is a solid number. The millage that this represents is 159,5548, and an average increase to the median home value of $109 for the year, or $9.15 monthly, on a monthly basis. From our previous slides, I will quickly look at those, as we've shared this before, previous areas of expense reduction and potential recovery and improvements as we have walked through. And with this budget, just the things that it does, on April 24th, you collectively unanimously approved the proposed budget with a rate increase of 2.9% and a millage of 159,5548, which is where we are at. This final budget includes the safety and security provisions, as we have outlined by the administration, including a school police officer, additional security guards, network administrator for cybersecurity. It includes staff increases for CEA in line with the collective bargaining agreement, full-step increases for those still on the grid, and a 0.2% increase to the overall value of the grid. For the support staff, there is an increase of 3.7%, which is in line with the September 2022 U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, as we've shared. Since that time, that number continues to move northward. And for the Act 93 staff, that same increase of 3.7%. It does include the funding requested by the Middle Bucks Institute of Technology. The Middle Bucks Institute of Technology is another item on the agenda for your approval. Revised their budget after doing a lot of accounting work over the last several months at MBIT, they've come back with a 3.2% increase to their general fund budget, and I have that entire budget accounted for in this plan, as well as the $154,000 in expense reductions, as we said we would do. We were going to continue to work up until the last day to try to find money to reduce that deficit, and that's exactly what we did. This does not include any staff reductions or changes to elementary class sizes per our policy, so there are no changes around that aspect of what we do here at the district. This then shows, as Rep. Brian Monroe shared when he was here last month, June in Harrisburg is budget season. I would sure like budget season to be in May in Harrisburg so that we were a little better aligned. So while there are estimates in here for our budget, we need to take them into consideration. We did receive that final assessed value, as I was sharing, and this shows that compared to our forecast, shows '20 through '22, actuals are 2023 forecast, and then the budget. We talked about the assessments, that is clear. The Pennsylvania budget, as I was sharing, is not yet finalized. We have, we are assuming $450 million added to the formula funding measure. The Governor Shapiro had requested $567 million. If we get what the Governor asked for, if we get it all, that would add an additional $200,000 to our overall planning. But we're trying to hedge some of that. We did include all the special education funding in our plan, so that is where those assumptions lie. Our five-year plan foreshadows certainly some challenges ahead with deficits projected despite full estimated Act One increases through 2028. This slide shows a comparison between revenue and expenditures, with revenues not quite keeping up with the pace of inflationary costs, and deficit, fund balance deficit in 2028. The assumptions that exist within that five-year plan, it assumes, as I shared, a full Act One increase through 2027, negative fund balance projected in 2028. The forecast shows a relatively state, a flat state funding. There's a lot of questions in Harrisburg right now with regard to funding. Some of those are, can the state continue increasing the funding allocation? Is that funding allocation sustainable? The impact and the reliance of formula funding needs to be taken into account as the dynamics and the economics of our own township change. Should we lose students, our funding would go down. Should our township economically relative to the other 500 districts in the state change, that can impact our formula funding. So there are a lot of components to that that we need to be aware of and are working to manage and watch very closely. We need to continue our lobbying on behalf of public schools. There was a recent press conference at William Tenet High School. I know Dr. Betten was in Harrisburg recently and, you know, looking for and asking for increased state funding to reduce the burden on local taxpayers, right? That's really the offset, the opportunity for the state to pitch in more and lessen the burden for our local taxpayers. And it's not just about funding, right? It's also about the mandates, right? We talk about cyber education, right? Cyber education, schools are receiving as much money as brick-and-mortar schools, and it is obviously less expensive to manage a remote organization versus full brick-and-mortar schools. So there's just a problem in the logic there, and I know people are talking about it. We just haven't seen any changes going on around that, and it's not about public schools versus charter schools. I would take Centennial and match it up against any school and the work that our teachers are doing here and the work that the administration and folks like Anthony and Dr. Best and Melissa are bringing to this school every day, making sure we are now aligned, making sure we are making up for some of the sins of the past, if you will. So I think those are some of the things we want to be cognizant of. Impact of declining financial performance on potential bond ratings in the future. Right now, our bond ratings are fixed. We have a very good rating, and should that go down, should we need to borrow money in the future, certainly impacts those. And just the overall changing economic conditions in a five-year plan. So that is the quick. So that is the quick of the plan. There is a copy of this presentation with each of you. There are slides towards the end that show more detail as to the revenue and expenses that make up that plan, and they're also included in the presentation that is online as a part of Board Docs. Any questions?
Mr. Goddardson.
Yes.
In case we get extra money from the state.
Yes.
Where is that money going to go?
Where is that money going to go? I think that money will fall through. In the perfect world, right, it'll fall through to the bottom line, right?
So it would reduce the deficit side.
It could, yes, absolutely, 100%.
Any other questions? Thank you.
I would just take one second, right? And I think that this, the presentation that you just went through and the time and energy around that, right? I think one of the consistencies has been a lack of funding for that dual education program, right? I'm not here to ask for more money, but that realization needs to be there. It's nice to say, yes, we should do this, right? But if you don't say, yes, we should do this, and yes, I support an increase of more than 2.9, then that's a little, that's a little mixed signals, right? And I think we need to own that. I think that is a part of the downfall of the program. Year after year, we would talk about it in May and June, we'd talk about it right now when the, when the time is difficult, and we came up short. I think collectively, we came up short. We didn't say, hey, we want to put our money where our mouth is, and we're going to buy $115,000 each year and increase that budget accordingly. We tried to do it on the skinny, we tried to do it year after year, and as Dr. G. shared at our last meeting, puts an extreme burden on teachers who are moving up each year and trying to learn that new education, learn that new program. So I certainly appreciate what you guys do. I think those are the ideas we need to be able to put our heads around in our planning for the future, right? When Dr. Ball invented this plan and brought this up with 60 days' notice and tried to implement it, that's sort of the shortcomings that we were, we were left with. So apologize for the extra talk. Thank you very much.
Mr. Greenwood, thank you so very much. You're presenting different budgets for 11 months out of this year, and we finally come to, I think we started in February.
We did.
And here we are, June 13th. Thank you for your hard work and your patience.
Thank you.
Thank you for getting us there without cutting anything for our students.
All right, the next item is Item Three on your agenda, reports. These reports will be reported on June 27th. That is where they belong. The other item we have is 3.2, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Benin, please.
You can keep it moving.
Okay, good.
We can keep going, I'm good.
You're done?
Yep.
Perfect.
The kids at the beginning and that stuff was part of my time.
Dr. Benin, thank you for that interesting report you've just given. Next item on the agenda is 4.1. Ms. Crossen, please.
Okay, be it resolved that Centennial School District Board of School Directors, 4.1 approves the June 13th, 2023 Board Agenda as per the attached. Are there any corrections that need to be made that are allowed by PA law? Wait a second.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Any nays, any abstentions? Okay, motion passes.
We will now go to, thank you, Ms. Crossen. We'll now go to public comments. Does anybody in the audience have any green cards they haven't turned in? All right, the first speaker is Ms. Wood. Oh, thank you. Yes, please.
Oh, thank you. So thank you again. I'm Annalise Wood of Warminster. My daughter, Annika Wood, is in the upcoming fifth grade class at McDonald Elementary School. And I'm here again on behalf of the fourth and fifth grade cohort and all the other dual language parents. I can't thank you enough for asking administration last month to bring you the data. I agree, I think the presentation was much more thorough, and I appreciate that transparency. I also ask that you, you know, I think they did mention it, but I really want to highlight that to you, that you can look at these cohorts as two different groups of, you know, individuals. Moving forward, you can see that the third grade moving into fourth grade, they almost had a full complement of a classroom, so their impact on that budget is really much less than my daughter's current cohort, which only has 16 students left in it. So I just want that to be very clear to the board. I also want you guys to make sure that you're able to really, you know, this was a huge presentation, 70-something slides, so I want to make sure that the time is taken to really digest that. Unfortunately, this was the first time we got to see the presentation. Yes, it was uploaded to Board Docs on Friday, but, you know, we were really hoping that on that June 6 parent meeting, that we would have been able to see this presentation and really be able to understand what the options were. We were hoping to collaborate, but that didn't happen. We did have some discussion, but really what was shared with us on the 6th was just that thoughtful exchange information, so I was pretty disappointed. After the Tuesday meeting with the school board, we got an email saying, please participate in a thoughtful exchange. It did not link to the board, there was no transparency that they are recommending curtailling. I think, Ms. Crossen, you asked, are the parents aware? I don't think they are. I really, you know, I, I think we've done better, but we're just not there yet. And I really appreciate, you know, your comments about accountability, and I just want to make sure that moving forward, other programs, like, there should be processes in place with the district where we continue to look at that and continue to work together with the parents. It's really, what's still lacking through this process. Yes, we were able to text in some thoughts and votes, but that's it. Towards the end of the meeting, where many parents already left because they were quite disappointed with what was shared on, on the 6th, because there was no presentation. It was just, here's a thought exchange. So we did have some good discussion towards the end, but it really took a long time. There was no brainstorming, and again, just poor communication. And I still do not really feel that besides the parents in this room, and the inaccessibility through Board Docs, and it's not intuitive, you know, somebody used that word earlier, I don't think that the parents are aware that the administrators are recommending to end the program. That has not been communicated in any emails. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pfeiffer?
Hello again, my name is Maria Pfeiffer. I'm also a resident in Warminster. And I mentioned at the last meeting that I myself don't have children in this program, but I come as an advocate for my niece, who is in the fourth grade cohort going into fifth grade this year. So I also want to say thank you for last meeting being able to postpone this vote so that more information could be brought forth, and I think the information that was brought out tonight was really helpful in terms of clarifying what exactly is happening in the current situation on the program. I also want to say I'm really sorry to the parents of the students that are in this program, the students as well. Ultimately, this is where it has led, and I also think it's important to recognize the teachers in the program who are probably working themselves to the bone trying to make this work and doing the best they can for their students. I also do feel for the administration, because I know it can't be easy bringing a recommendation like this to the board and to parents in the community, and I know that it isn't something that's being taken lightly. So just to reiterate what Annalise just mentioned about the information tonight, it was a ton of information, and I know you have to vote tonight, but I feel apprehensive about tonight's vote, because it's one thing to read it and see it, but to take some time to digest the information and really take into account what the implications of whatever decision happens tonight, I believe is important. One comment that I'd like to bring forth is that I don't know how much the teachers have given their input, the teachers who are involved in the program. We didn't see that in the presentation, and I don't know, in terms of like, is it, is it unfair to, if they're feeling like it should end, maybe it is better to protect them in this case, but I don't know if that was, be a possibility. An idea I have, I guess, to bring to the board is that the district I work in has a job share opportunity where it's a, I don't know if Centennial does this as well, but it would be a 50-50 split, where the salary is split between, where a single teacher's salary is split between two teachers, and only one teacher gets the benefits. So like in my current school, there are two second-grade teachers where the one's partner has, carries the benefits for the family, so in order to work part-time, she was okay with allowing the other, her counterpart to have the full benefits for the program. So I don't know if that would be a possibility in terms of the budget and staffing. Lastly, I just want to say that I don't envy the school board's position tonight in having to vote on this. I think the data presented is concerning as it relates to the efficacy and the implementation of the program, and I think you have to balance three things, which would be to weigh the evidence from the data that supports the recommendation of the administration with your own philosophy of what to do when a program is not performing, and then also your moral obligation as a district to the parents and students in this program. So my hope is that we get a solution that is agreeable rather than termination of the program, but if they do go the place, I know, I'm sorry, I'm done, but I just hope that the communication, if it does go towards terminating the program, is done tactfully and involves the students and their feelings and concerns as well. Thank you for your time.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Kuhn? K-U-H-N, if I'm not pronouncing it correctly.
Hi, Karen Keun, but that's okay. Yeah, so I joined y'all last month, just as that we hold off on the vote, just so more individuals had a chance to hear more about what was going on, so I really appreciate you doing that. I feel that the administration did reach out, they sent the thought exchange, you know, they took a step back and really tried to make sure that everybody's voice could be heard. And when we met last week, unfortunately, we did not have all of the results that were shared tonight, you know, based on where our kids were. We found out, I think it was Friday, that it was released. So this is the first time that many of us have actually seen how our kids ranked maybe against their peers and other students. So I thought it was very well presented. I know a lot of thought was put into that to make sure that they could outline all of the different options, and I think that data is clear that very few of the children are where they should be based on their grade level. My son is going to be going into fourth grade, so he's in Cohort B. I personally do not feel that I will keep him in the program moving forward after seeing what I saw tonight, because I do not feel that the teachers have the right resources to really have an effective program. My son is clearly not going to be able to speak Spanish fluently within the next two years. I feel that we have two amazing teachers that could be utilized in better ways than having them continue with a program that is not honestly effective. So I know it is a very, very hard decision. I appreciate your passion and your support, all of you. It's clear that you do have such a huge focus on what's right for our students, but I do also want us to think about the teachers too. I can only imagine how burned out they're going to be having to learn a whole new curriculum again. And as you can see, there are a few of us that have been here and at multiple meetings now. I'm sure other parents do feel strongly, but just are not able to get away to be here. It's just my opinion, but just looking at, you know, what was shared today, I really feel that I want my son to be able to focus on, you know, the other areas where clearly a lot of the students are struggling with math and whatnot, and I feel like after COVID, we lost time, our kids lost time. I mean, my son was in kindergarten when he ended up having to do Zoom calls, and he knows how to change his background and all that stuff before I did, so they're learning a lot there, but they've lost years. There's no way that they're going to be at a third or fourth grade level as they should be, you know, maybe a first or second grade, maybe not even that. I don't feel like Cohort B even had a full year with an effective program. So I just want to thank you all again. Dr. Benin, thank you so much. I appreciate you all taking the accountability. There's been so many changes, and it's really hard to keep up with a program when you're trying to clean up everything else that could have gone wrong during COVID. So I really appreciate all that you are doing for our district and for our students and their futures, and Dr. Best, Anthony, I appreciate your time. All of you, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lovelace?
I mean, everything I pretty much wanted to say has been a little bit covered, but I do want to say that my daughter has learned a lot during this program. A lot of it may have been on our part encouraging her to read Spanish books and whatnot, but she has learned a lot. Even my Spanish-speaking friends have said that they know, she knows more than their own kids. But I do want to disagree with you, Mrs. Lynch, on the fact that you said that they cannot, Dr. Benin and the rest of the administration cannot be held accountable for passing administrations. Being prior service, there is a thing called change of command, where all information and anything needed for the next command is passed over, passing the baton, sort of. So they should have known all the faults of this program when they took the job. If they didn't, that's, you know, failure on everybody else as well. I also want to point out that Dr. Benin had said that he came from a dual-language program, and I believe Dr. G. has as well. There should have been some kind of attempt to revamp the program by then as well. From what I see and understand, there hasn't been any attempts. It's a pilot program. It should be, in my opinion, at the top of the charts. It's something that puts this district out, makes it different from all the other districts. To me, that would be a priority. I mean, there's so much more I wish I could say, but I just can't remember, but I do feel like this is part of the administration's fault and Dr. Benin's fault, because, like I said, there is a change of command, passing the baton, whatever you want to call it. They should have had facts presented to them and access to all this information. But I am, I am disappointed that this program must likely be curtailed. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Next card is from Mr. Walter W. Now, you seem to have a twin, another person named Walter, that I have two cards.
I put in a second card, because in the budget presentation, a statement was made, and being a retired chief financial officer, a question popped up, and it just didn't make sense to me to answer. So if I could ask that question first and then make my, my presentation statement second, would that be okay?
Your budget question is, you're ready.
I'm ready for that one. You mentioned that any surplus funding that Dr. Benin had asked for would be passed through the budget down to the bottom and would be offsetting the deficit. Now, are you talking about, you said deficit, the statement you made. So are you saying?
Excuse me, excuse me, sir. Pause me. You have to talk to the chair, you can't go back and forth administration. She can determine whether we answer.
Okay, no, I'm sorry, I apologize for that.
No, you're fine. I just wanted to.
But, does he mean that the money is going to go to a deficit, but the budget was presented as balanced, so there's no deficit? And the deficit, the only way you offset it, whatever deficit you had, was by moving money to the, from the general fund into the budget. So is he saying that he's going to take the money, put it back into the general fund, or is that money going to be used for education?
I know what you're saying, and it sounds that way. Mr. Greenwood, would you be so kind as to answer it? It will be a balanced budget.
Sure, so we are using $619,000 of general fund to offset what was the deficit, so we are using... So we are using general fund dollars to offset that. So that $200,000 that Mr. Godikson spoke of, should the governor's budget pass, right, that would reduce the reduction to the general fund.
Okay. I just wanted a clarification of that. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. How about class of 23? Did you enjoy yourself?
On the class of 23, what I wanted to say was, I had an opportunity to attend the senior night of reflection this year. It was really run well. It was really a nice surprise to watch, and it honored many students. I also had the opportunity to attend the commencement ceremony on June 7th, and I want to thank everybody who was involved in that, the making that, pulling it off on a day that was so smoky.
One note.
Like that, okay? And I listened to what the principal said in her congratulatory remarks. Dr. Hendrick had made a statement to the graduates that wherever you are, whatever you do, that is enough, okay? And she repeated that statement several times throughout the conversation. And it got me thinking, okay? Because the first question I had was, who were those 10 students sitting behind you three? Behind Dr. the principal, yourself, and Dr. Bettin? There was 10 students sitting up on that stage that were never acknowledged except for a little asterisk behind the name. And do you want to know who those people were? They were the students that achieved summa cum laude, okay? That is achieving the highest awards scholastically. They achieved grades greater than the 4.0 that we list as being an A, okay? But nowhere are those kids acknowledged or reported. None of our webpages list their names. None of them appeared on any of the reports or, you know, I followed a little bit along with this. You know, I looked at all the school district alerts. They talk about Mr. Tennant and Ms. Panther and who those people are, or who the singers are, or what artists that drew a picture, but never talk about the students that earned the highest degree in our school district. Not once are they mentioned, okay? Those kids have done sacrifices. I know of one who studied and did his homework in the car, being driven an hour and a half to a three-hour practice and an hour and a half back from that practice, three to five days a week so that he could play junior-level hockey. No, that's in a league that's, it was USPHL where the students are 18- to 21-year-olds and usually bidding to get into a college at that point in time and graduate a college. They did receive an award on senior recognition night, but for 2022? It was replaced eventually after I mentioned and brought this up. But I wondered, is that enough? Is that what we were talking about in that commencement, you know, commencement statement? Was that what we list as being enough? I think this school district should honor those kids. Honor the one kid that should have been the valedictorian speaker but wasn't because they had a government officer speak, okay? Student government officer speak, not the valedictorian who had actually skipped a grade, played in the, you know, he was a merit-honor scholarship finalist. In addition to that, he was listed to the All-Star Band for the state of Pennsylvania. Where's that recognition?
I will say one thing. Maybe you're not aware, but everything was cut short because of the air.
Yes, I know. I was there.
You were in that stadium. I.
I watched you speak. And, but they allowed the singers to sing. They had bands play music.
Sir.
But they couldn't spend five minutes?
You were in that, and some board members, I don't mean to, I thank you for bringing this to our attention, but you know how that smoke was in that stadium. It was pretty bad. So thank you for what you're saying. I think that maybe we can do better, and we will.
Can I read their names into record? So at least it's somewhere in our school district record?
If you feel that that's what you want to do, you're way over the limit. Go ahead.
Okay. All right. The recipients of summa cum laude, okay, it was Kerry Keo, Rishi Denlani, who is our top-ranked student, Kelly Donley, Aaron Somerville, and Maximus Wrigley, okay? Additional to those receiving summa cum laude, there were five recipients of the AP Capstone Program. That's, you know, we're one of school, one of 1,600 schools in the world that offer this. It's a two-year, very intensive program that only certain kids are invited into. Those candidates are Zoe Ditz, Diltz, Ava Madnick, Mahila Simone, Emma Toric, and my son Walter Wey. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Ms. Crossen, please.
Okay. And does anybody want to pull anything?
You're on numbers?
Number six. Six all the way? Yes.
Yep. Could we vote on 6.7 separately and 6.9B?
6.7.
All of 6.7?
Hold on. What does it say? 6.7. Oh, no, I'm sorry. 6.7A, I'm sorry.
Okay. And what was the other one? I'm sorry.
6.9. Wait, wait, hold on one second. 6.9. 6.9B and 6.7A.
Ms. Crossen, please.
Anybody else? Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, 6.1A, approves the minutes from the May 9th, 2023 Work Session Regular School Board Meeting. 6.1B approves the minutes from the May 23rd, 2023 Committee of the Whole Meeting. 6.2A approves resignations. 6.2B approves authorizations to employ. 6.2C approves leave of absence. 6.2D approves change of status. 6.2E approves mentors. 6.3, exceptions to policy, none. 6.4, appointments, none. 6.5, waivers, none. 6.6, conferences and travel. 6.6A approves the overnight trip request for two William Tennant High School students and one chaperone to attend the Future Business Leaders of America National Conference and Competition, Atlanta, Georgia, June 26th to the 30th, 2023. District costs not to exceed $5,221.90. Bids and quotes, we're going to skip over 6.7A. 6.7B approves the renewal of databases, license, and software for the 2023-2024 school year, including Brain Pop, Capstone Pebblego, Ed Puzzle, Great Minds, Hutton, Mifflin, Hartcourt, McGraw-Hill, Progress Learning, and World Book. District costs not to exceed $146,352.78. 6.7C approves a renewal of Accelerate Education Online Curriculum and Learning Management System for Centennial Virtual Learning Academy for the 2023-2024 school year. District costs to be paid with ESER funds and is not to exceed $36,445. 6.7D awards wireless display bid 2023-15 to Bloom USA Inc. for 225 screen beam 1,000 EDUs for Klinger Middle School, Loud College Middle School, and William Tennant High School classrooms and conference rooms. District costs not to exceed $90,000. 6.7E awards data warehouse system RFP 2023-06 to Panorama for a three-year contract, including an 8% multi-year discount beginning July 1st, 2023. District costs not to exceed $202,242.40. 6.7F awards athletic equipment and supplies bid 2023-08 to BSN MFAC Pyramid School Products, Riddle, and Sportsmans in the agreement amount of $20,595.57. 6.7G awards art supply bid 2023-10 to Lick Art Cascade School Supplies, Kurtz Brothers, Lakeshore Learning, WB Mason, Mecko Supply, Nasco National Art Photo Warehouse, and Pyramids. Oh, I was supposed to skip that one, huh? Was that the one? No, never mind. We're good. And Pyramid School Supply in the arena amount of $53,233.62. 6.7H awards bid 2023-16 to James D. Morrissey Inc. for paving repairs at William Tennant High School and the Transportation Center, including alternate one, for a cost not to exceed $422,751.0. And further authorizes the board president to sign the contract following completion of the public review process on June 23rd, 2023. 6.8, assemblies, speakers, and programs, none. 6.9, contracts, license, and services. 6.9A approves the renewal agreement between Centennial School District and Family Services Association of Bucks County to continue providing outpatient therapeutic programs in office space at Loud College Middle School. No cost to the district. Skip over 6.9B. 6.9C approves the 2023-2024 renewal agreement between Lakeside Educational Network and Centennial School District for in-school counselor services. The amount of the contract is $5,998,500 for seven in-school counselors. 6.11, acceptance of donations, grants, and bequests, none. 6.12, changes to academic programs, positions, and stipends, none. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions? That passes. Then we're going to move back to, all right, 6.7A. Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors approves the three-year renewal of Thought Exchange, the district survey and feedback tool, from Fulcrum Management Solutions. District costs not to exceed $74,448. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Mrs. Brancato?
No, I just wanted to vote on it separately.
Okay. Mrs. Rush, can we do a roll call, please?
You don't even have to do, I didn't, I just wanted to just vote on it separately. I don't care if it's a roll call. I don't care about that. So if that's, I don't, whatever you want to do is fine.
Yeah, just do one. We'll do it for both of the ones that are polled. Okay. Mr. Sadowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Brancato?
No.
Mrs. Crossen?
Yes.
Mrs. Islandberg?
Yes.
Mr. Godikson?
Yes.
Mr. Leyden?
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Gindhart?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Motion passes eight-one. Okay, thank you. Now, we're going to move on to 6.9, contract, license, and services. Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, 6.9B approves the renewal agreement with Lakeside Educational Network for student placements, supplementary support, and mobile support for 15 special education student placement slots. District costs not to exceed $583,050.0. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, Mrs. Brancato?
I just wanted, I just, is Ms. Bolden here? I can't see you that far.
No, she's on vacation.
So these students for 6.9B? This is standard, right?
Yes, these are, it's a renewal. It's students who are currently receiving services, already, if I remember correctly. Dr. Best?
I just want to ask a question.
Sure.
Can I do that?
Yeah, I just answered one question she asked about it being standard. But yes.
Are these students, do these students attend at Lakeside or they come here? That was my question.
These are, these are for slots for.
I can't hear, I can't hear you. Sorry.
I think the battery might be dying. These are for slots for students who would attend at Lakeside.
Question, though, could we not service them in the district?
That is why they'd be serviced at Lakeside, yes.
Yeah, but why could we not serve them in the district?
Because they're students in need of a therapeutic climate beyond which what we're able to provide in public education.
Mr. Rush, can we do a roll call on that one?
Give me a second. Can I just ask one more question?
Sure.
Because isn't, isn't part of that, I'm getting confused now. We had two sections there, right? One was for?
You're looking at.
I'm asking about 6.9B.
Yep.
And then the next one is for 6.9C.
Yes, so 6.9C is for, is for a different set of students. That's for in-house counselors that provide counseling service.
Still located at Lakeside?
No. 6.9C, those counselors are in Centennial Schools. They work out of our buildings.
So we couldn't do that for the 15? They couldn't come here?
So the students that would attend at Lakeside are there for their entire educational program. The counselors that are on-site in the 6.9C item are here to provide counseling services for many students in our schools who would, who take their whole academic program here in Centennial.
Right.
But are in need of some therapeutic support within the building.
So these 15 students in 6.9B, they can never come back?
Those are slots we're buying in bulk at Lakeside to be able to have students be serviced there. Some of the students would attend at Lakeside for a period of time and then come back. Other students, it's more beneficial for them to stay there, and they're succeeding there, and they remain there.
Okay.
So it really depends on the individual kid. I don't want to not answer yet, but it's on a kid-by-kid basis.
And in addition to that, there are times, as she points out, it actually would cost us more to hire the person, to work for us directly.
Any other questions?
15 students shouldn't take on one, most two teachers. That shouldn't cost $600,000.
If they were, you'd be correct if they were all in the same grade, needing the same exact academic program, but that, as you know, is never going to be the case.
Any other questions? Mr. Rush, can we do a roll call, please? Mrs. Brancato?
No.
Mrs. Crossen?
Yes.
Mrs. Islandberg?
Yes.
Mr. Godikson?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Leyden?
Yes.
Mr. Gindhart?
Yes.
Mr. Sadowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch?
Yes.
Motion passes eight-one. Okay, moving on to.
Madam President, may I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Not for long. I've just been a little negligent, but I have a question. We just approved, which I voted for, item 6.7H for the contract with Marcy for repairs. As I went through the paperwork that was involved with that, Marcy was not the low bidder on that project. The low bidder evidently, for some reason unbeknownst to me, was not recommended. And I was just curious, usually we recommend the low bidder, or have a very good reason not to use the low bidder, $24,000. So I was just curious why, over and done with, we approved it, so why didn't we take the low bid?
Thank you, Mr. Greenwood. There is a reason.
I hope so.
So the reason is that this is the first contract of over $300,000. So we have our policy, 817 Responsible Contractor. So Marcy was the low responsible contractor bid.
That means that the low bidder was not a union contractor, I take it?
That means that the low bidder did not have an apprenticeship program.
Right.
Did not participate in an apprenticeship program, nor do they hire anyone that does, their staff is, does not have anyone from an apprenticeship program. They belong to one, but they do not hire, and no one on their staff is.
Other than that, was there any notice that they were incapable of doing the job, or they did a lousy job somewhere else? Or is this the only reason that we spent $24,000 more?
The only reason was that we were following our policy.
As I predicted when we adopted that policy, it's already costing the taxpayers money. Thank you very much. it's already costing the taxpayers money. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Greenwood. Ms. Carlson, please.
Okay. So we're going to move to...
Seven.
Seven. All right, does anybody want to pull that? Any questions on that? So we're going to go with, be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors approves of removing from the table the following motion that was tabled on May 23, 2023, Board Meeting. Approves the curtailment of the dual-language program at McDonald Elementary School effective June 10, 2023.
Hold on a second. Did you just read seven point?
Seven point one. That's just removing it.
Moving it from the table. Okay.
Right. Can I get a second?
Yes.
Okay. Any... All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any nays? Okay, perfect. Then we're going to move on to new business. Does anybody want to pull anything from new business?
Yes. Eight. Eight point one, eight point two, eight point three.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, so I'm going to go through eight point one, two, and three. We're going to... I'm going to read them, then we can just discuss them and keep going. Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, eight point one, approves the curtailment of the dual-language program at McDonald Elementary School effective June 10, 2023. Can I get a second?
Second.
Do you want to do a separate roll call? Is that what you want to do?
On this one, for the approval. I think it was almost unanimous, wasn't it?
We have to vote on it, whether we're going to...
Okay, we can do a roll call.
Yep. I have a comment for you, Bill.
Yes.
A question was asked from the parent on the board about teachers being provided input. The teachers sat and had one-on-one meeting with Teaching and Learning Department to discuss the program, so they did have direct input regarding the situation. It is also from the feedback I got to answer the question. During that meeting, it was... The intent of the meeting was to share and gather more information, and that they could not see the presentation because the board hadn't received the information yet. And they were shared that it would be released on Friday to the public, which are normal protocols. So that was the answer to that question. And that the administration was still coming forward with the same recommendation. So just to respond to some of the questions that were made that was communicated to me when I asked for a briefing of the results of the meeting. The teachers were discussing this project.
So for eight point one, can we do a roll call on that one? So this is for the... This is to approve the curtailment of the language program.
Mrs. Eilenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Goddixon?
No.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadowski?
No.
Mrs. Brancato?
No.
Mr. Lyden?
Yes.
Mr. Gindhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch?
Yes.
Motion to curtail passes six-three.
Eight point two. Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors adopts the final budget of the school district for the 2023-2024 fiscal year on the Form PDE 2028 with a tax increase of 2.9% as the final budget for the school district general fund in the amount of $140,913,929. In expense... You got my gist there. An expense with the revenue of $140,913,929. Authorizes a 2023-2024 annual tax levy resolution, real estate tax installment payment plan, and the homestead/farmstead exclusion resolution. Can I get a second?
Second.
Can we do...
Before we do that, I asked to have that pulled. Mr. Greenwood did include in his slide presentation of the budget and what we have voted for during the process. I'm just mentioning this because I think people should know. A no vote on this budget means you did not vote for safety and security provisions, including the school police officer, additional security guards, cybersecurity, and staff increases. A no vote is for the CEA that they have an increase in their full step and a point two in the matrix. A no vote has a support staff increase of 3.7, which we have already approved that contract. Act 93, staff increase, 3.7, which we have already approved that contract. Also, funding as requested by MBIT Institute of Technology of 3.2%. A no vote means that you voted against these and other things. I just wanted that to be a matter of record, even though it was in a slide presentation from Mr. Greenwood. Thank you. Now, see, I don't agree with that. Just if somebody votes no, it doesn't mean that they're not in support of almost all of those things, or maybe just one thing they're not. You don't get to decide. Nobody gets to decide why somebody votes no. No, I agree. I agree. I mean, under the First Amendment, everybody has the right... You're right, but you can't say that a no vote means a person doesn't support other things, because each person has the ability to speak for themselves. Okay, I've been patient with your reply. I'll give you mine. If you approve something like security, and everybody sits the table, and it's nine-zero, we support it. Then the bill comes in, and you vote against it. If we approve contracts, and we vote for the contracts, and you vote against it, it means you don't want to be part of it. The MBIT 3.2% budget is included in this budget. And if you vote for it, fine. If you vote against it, means you don't particularly care for that. That isn't what it means. Well... Perhaps it means that the person who votes no thinks there should be cutbacks in other areas. Perhaps that's what they mean. Well, perhaps that's... You cannot speak for everyone. Oh, I'm not. I would never dare. You're saying what no means. Well, that's what no means. Maybe that's what it means to you, but it doesn't have to mean no to everybody else.
Okay, did anyone else have another comment on?
Wait a minute. Not to go through it. No, you can't go out. Yes, you can. I understand what no means. Thank you.
Okay. Can we do a roll call on this one, Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Mrs. Brancato?
I'm voting no, and I don't agree with...
Mrs. Eilenberg?
That's fine.
Yes.
Mr. Lyden?
Yes.
Mrs. Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Sadowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Gindhart?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Aye with reservations.
Mr. Goddixon?
Yes.
Motion passes eight-one.
Okay, moving along. Eight point three. Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors authorize the expenditures of the Middle Bucks Institute of Technology General Program for the period of July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2024 as set forth by the submitted budget proposal. MBIT General Fund Year Over Year Budget Increase Equals 3.2%. Can I get a second?
Second.
Mrs. Lynch?
Yes, the reason I brought this up is that I know this budget is 3.2%. I know the budget we have for Centennial is 2.9. I know in our area, in the country, there's a great push to have children in trade school. I will vote for this, even though we are lower in the percentage. I would also ask, which I don't believe in the two years that I've returned, in the fifteen years previous to that, we had the finance person from MBIT come down to the board and explain the budget. That's what I would really like to see.
Well, if I can make a comment here.
Please.
The total amount is 3.2%, but the total cost to Centennial School District is only 2.86%, so it's below the 2.9%.
Oh, okay, so you want to change the expenditures for MBIT?
The total cost to Centennial... To MBIT is 3.2%, but the cost to Centennial is 2.86.
I don't understand.
Because it has to do with reconciling information.
I would be happy if it was the lower one.
I think the reconciliation actually increases the 3.2%. Increases the 3.2%. There's $132,000 ruffle reconciliation following the review against the district, right? So it's an additional 132 on top of the 3.2% for clarity.
Wait, what?
So they just... So the President inquired about this earlier, and there was a reconciliation that made ours go up. So what Mr. Goddixon is speaking to was at one point a number that we were trying to work on. As you know, your first preliminary proposed budget was higher than that. As I said with the Board President when she inquired about it and talking to him, we support this administrative levy because at this point, the new executive has done a Herculean job trying to make lemonade out of lemons. And we're putting some things in place, such as the process with superintendents engaging in the conversation sooner before it goes to their board. And secondly, he is on board with what was done in the past with having the finance person present to speak to it also, once they get the permanent person in place. But he has done a Herculean job. He knows our concerns. I've communicated them rarely at this point. But we believe we've gotten to a point that there's not much else we can do with it at this point, other than we recommend while we brought it, to go ahead and approve it at this point.
Okay, so this 3.2 is accurate?
Is accurate, yes.
Okay.
With the reconciliation that was sent to us, yes.
Roll call.
Okay, can we do a roll call, please?
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Eilenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Sadowski?
Yes.
Eight point three.
Thank you.
Mrs. Carlson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brancato?
Yes.
Mr. Gindhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Goddixon?
Yes.
Mr. Lyden?
Yes.
Motion passes nine-zero.
Okay, since the rest of these were not polled, I'm going to go right through them, and then we'll get to the end. Eight point four. Approves the addendum to the memorandum of understanding with the Warmester Township, Upper Southampton Township, and Ivyland Borough Police Department to provide district camera access to police officers in the event of an emergency, as per the attached. Eight point five. Approves the continued enrollment at Klinger Middle School for students. Latin Anthem resident 26-7 as a tuition student. The student's home district will pay tuition and will provide transportation, as per the attached. Eight point six. Be it resolved as prescribed in Board Policy 304, the Board of School Directors authorizes the superintendent to make the required employment decisions and staffing for the 2023-2024 school year from June 28, 2023 through August 14, 2023. In order to maintain the continuity of educational programs and services, these personnel actions will be presented to the board for retroactive approval at the August 15, 2023 Board Meeting, as per the attached. Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any of nays? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
Mr. Carlson, thank you very much. Policy is nine point one. Ms. Allenberg, please.
Thank you. We did not have an admin policy meeting in May. We will be having one on the 20th of June, though, and hope to have an update. We will have an update after that. Thank you. And also, nine point two. Policies presented for adoption. Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors adopts 9.2A Policy 805.2, School Security Personnel. Do I have a second?
Second.
Question if I might?
Absolutely.
That policy, which I just read through, refers on many occasions to a school resource officer. To my knowledge, we don't have a school resource officer. Neither Township or Borough of Ivyland has approved that, and we're including it in a policy when we don't have it. That doesn't make much sense to me. It's a little premature. If we have to add that later, if and when we ever get them, that seems like a logical thing to do, not include something we don't have.
Interesting, Mr. Martin.
I do read his stuff.
I know you do.
So, Mr. Martin, that policy, one, is one that because we now have the school security personnel, 805.2, is required for us to have in place. Two, a communication was sent saying that this was... Because, you know, it didn't go through the normal process to get us in compliance as an emergency action. And then it would go through an admin policy in the meeting coming up for there to be corrections made to it. So it was brought to get us in compliance. And then the communication sent to the board is that that admin policy would make the corrections to it as necessary.
Why don't you just make the corrections now? Take out the school resource officer. We don't have them.
And if we don't have it, it has no impact on us.
Well, why have a policy on something that doesn't exist? That makes no sense.
But because there are other parts of it that are required. But the same thing you're saying, it doesn't hurt us right now either. And it's going to go through the full process. But the main thing was to get us in compliance. Your point's well taken, but it doesn't hurt us either.
It doesn't gain anything either. It changes something that doesn't need to be...
If you want to take it out, that's fine.
That's fine. Forget it. I just think...
Excuse me. If we really don't have a school resource officer...
Take it out.
Madam President, if I may? Dr. Bedden talked about this also bringing us into compliance, this language bringing us into compliance.
What's with what, Bedden?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Secretary, I'm trying to find it. Yeah, the verbiage. I got it. It's coming up.
I move to table nine point two.
Second.
Can we hear out Dr. Bedden? Is that okay?
No discussion or motion to table, madam.
Motion is made. Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. No. No.
Farnie?
I'm saying no. I don't agree. I don't want to reach the table.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we gave Dr....
Can I assume it's eight-one?
I'm a no. To table.
You're a no also?
I'm a no.
Can we do a roll call?
Let's move forward with it.
Can we move... Do a...
All right, let's go roll call.
It says specifically why it's not a problem. The district, when applicable and funded, shall establish an agreement with local township. That's why we left it in there.
We can't mandate the township should make an agreement with it.
That's why it says when applicable and funded. That's why it's harmless.
I would predict that isn't going to happen. I have pretty good predictions.
I'm sorry to mention this, but there's a motion on the floor and a second on the motion. What is the vote? To table this issue, correct? Yes. So all in favor of tabling this?
Aye.
Mr. Martin, can we do a roll call vote, please? So we have some clarity?
How many voted to table it, please? So it looks like three?
No, four. Farnie, did you raise your hand?
Yes.
Four. Is there five? Motion fails.
So we'll...
Can I ask a question? Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Go on.
Wasn't Dr. Bedden speaking?
No, that was...
Okay.
So I just have a question. It says independent contractor, third-party vendor. Can somebody please tell me what that's about?
That's like if you have a security company.
Oh, I know what... I know what an independent contractor is, and I know what a third-party vendor is. But why do we have them in there for our school's safety?
Because that's part of the requirements that they have to abide by if we use them. And we actually have them in place right now. If you remember, we actually have some of that supplementing our high school because we haven't been able to fill our positions.
So we have independent contractors?
We have a third-party security company that has been staffing our vacant positions for the whole spring.
As an independent contractor or a third-party vendor?
A third-party vendor.
So why do we have independent contractors?
Because that could, if you happen to use them, they have to comply with this.
Yeah.
It is putting provisions in place that says if you use these people, this is what you have to make sure to comply with state law.
Yeah. So are we, are we going to move toward not using independent contractors and third-party vendors? Because I'm not on board for third-party vendors.
If we, once we get a full complement of people, yes. But we've had vacancies across our district and many districts with having enough security personnel, which we presented in, in our executive sessions three times.
Ms. Allenberg, in reference to policy 9.2A, the motion was defeated. Have you put a motion on the floor to move this policy forward?
May I have a second to move this policy forward?
Second.
When you do a roll call vote, please? Mrs. Rush?
I'm so confused on what we're voting on now.
9.2.
Policy.
9.2. We're voting on whether to adopt it or not?
Yeah.
Mr. Gindhart?
Yes.
Mrs. Crossen?
Yes.
Mrs. Brancato?
No.
Mr. Lyden?
Yes.
Mrs. Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Goddixon?
No.
Mr. Martin?
No.
Mr. Sadowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Islandberg?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-3.
Okay, financials. Mr. Martin?
There's four items. Anybody want any of these pulled for further discussion? I don't see any, therefore, he resolves the Centennial Board of School Directors approves 10.1, the Schedule of Bills, Investments, Cafeteria Fund, Budget Reports, and a General Fund Cash Receipt Summary for May of 2023 as per the attached. 10.2 approves the 2023 budget transfers for May as per the attached. 10.3 approves the pending bills list as per the attached, and 10.4 accepts the pre-approved paid bills list as per the attached. I move for the adoption of all four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 9-0. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Item 11.1 is board discussion and comments. I have two little items, and anybody else who wants to have items, please feel free to jump in. We had talk with this gentleman about the graduation on last Wednesday. It was absolutely fantastic. The administration made arrangements that if someone had a breathing problem, they could go into the auditorium and watch it, or some people who couldn't make the ceremony, watch it at home. We had board members, four board members there, five myself, Mrs. Crossen, Allenberg, Brancato, Mr. Sadowski. So if you have anything after I'm finished you would like to add to that? I think the ceremony was probably the fastest I've ever seen in my 17 years on the board. It was one hour, and the smoke was hanging in the stadium. But for myself on a personal level, it was my last grandchild graduating for Centennial, from Centennial. So if that smoke would have been to my neck, I would have sat out there, trust me. Does anyone, Mrs. Crossen, Mrs. Allenberg, Mrs. Brancato, Sadowski, have anything to add?
So, yeah, I just wanted to say that watching our students, we have, I know people think that I'm biased or whatever because, you know, I went through it and my son went through it, but we have the best students. Like, I could, when I say Centennial strong, I mean we are a great district. We are a strong district. I also wanted to point out that when you were with the bills, yeah, I spend my time going through the line by line, they had stand-up desks. I don't know where they were going to, but they are the best thing. I was just reading this little survey thing about how sitting down sedentary for anybody is like the new smoking. So these stand-up desks are fantastic and just letting the community know that we are getting stand-up desks for some of our students in some of the classrooms who choose to do that, which is, which is pretty great. I don't know if anybody looks, we itemize bill line by line, but yes, in my free time. But that's something that we have in our classrooms now that the kids can use, which is great.
Ms. Allenberg, give a comment?
I just wanted to talk about Night of Reflections. Every, it's the third, the third one that I've attended, and every time it just gets me, just the heart that's put into that, Ms. Banshee and all of the students and how much effort they put in, and just to see them so happy and so excited, it just fills my heart. It just gets me every time. Thank you for such a great program.
Thank you.
And to the point of the standing desks, if sitting for long periods of time is bad for your health, it's great incentive to move these school board meetings along a little faster, so. Graduation was lovely. I take the gentleman's point that we should give a little bit more love to the academic achievements of our students as well.
Ms. Brancato, do you have anything to add?
Yes, it's not about graduation, though. So I just wanted to ask if maybe we could have a little more communication. While I think it was wonderful that Dr. Bedden had a press conference, I was extremely dismayed that I had to learn about it on Warminster Patch. So it's not like people didn't know ahead of time, because I did have somebody call me that was invited and could not attend and asked me, did I know about it? I said, no idea what you're talking about. So I'm not trying to be mean, take it like you want it, whatever. I just don't think I should have to learn about comings and goings of the district from the Warminster Patch. I don't think I should have to learn it there.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President, if I might, one, very quick, I had to watch that on television due to the conditions and the weather, but it was well done. I'm glad you shortened it, but I have one, one thing going forward. I would love that they would somehow, if they're going to do one musical thing for the, for the program, it be the William Tennant Alma Mater, which, which, as an alumni, I think that should be played at every graduation. It should be sung by the students, not only at graduation, but at other events, and I get a feeling that it's kind of drifting away, but I hope that's not accurate.
Thank you.
Our alma mater is not an ABBA song? I'm surprised.
I don't want to age myself, Mr. Martin.
I'll ask you to sing it, Tony, if you're not here.
But, Mr. Martin, the high school I went to, what you stated is exactly what we did. So the other item I have...
Before you leave, Madam President?
Communication is this one.
Madam President, before you leave?
Dr. Bedden, of course.
Thank you. I do want to also highlight the other salient point that we all know we had this year, one of our teams make it to the States. So I do want to recognize our boys volleyball team for their successful season this year. And I do want to thank Children's First, because it wasn't my press conference, we were blessed to be the host. Previously, Ben Salem, and we were asked to host it this year and participate along with Ben Salem and our colleagues from New Hope Salisbury for that press conference. And then I was also asked to speak on the funding needs, delinquency, homelessness in Harrisburg for our district, and our focus is always if we can get more state funding to give property tax relief to our local taxpayers, Madam President.
Wasn't, was the fact that our homelessness doubled, is that accurate?
Our homeless has gone from, I'm doing this from memory, like 38 to over 100 students in a two-year period, which was a significant number. And so I was asked to come to Harrisburg to speak on that, as well as the need for a more increased basic education funding, again, which gives relief to our local taxpayers. But we were just a host. It was Children's First Press Conference. Thank you.
Thank you. The other item I wanted to bring up, and then we will move on with our agenda, is the Memorial Day Parade for Warminster, Southampton, and Ivyland. William Tennant marching band. I went over this Saturday before Memorial Day Parade. Here's these students out in the heat. No band director, no assistant band director, marching along and practicing. That just didn't happen. We have the William Tennant marching band president, Patty Hartline, who worked due diligently to accomplish this. I learned things that I didn't know. I didn't know to have a parade, I never ran a parade, that you have to make sure you have nurses, and you have to do this, and you have to do that. It is a tedious task. And then we had Samantha McMaster, who was a William Tennant graduate, lead the parade. And then we had these phenomenal parents, were so proud of their students and their sons and daughters. But above all, this whole operation of the marching band rose to an occasion, like I said, and I can't emphasize enough, no band director, no assistant band director, parents in leadership from the organization of the marching band. These students will go far in life because they were really determined, and for my part in my township of Warminster, I truly appreciate them, I'm sure Southampton and Ivyland did the same. So kudos to this phenomenal group of young people who are a tradition in our district, the William Tennant marching band. Thank you. Having said that, would you please, excuse me?
Just one more shout out.
I'm sorry, excuse me. Please.
I just wanted to give a shout out to the teacher who volunteered also to help, and that was Mrs. Anne Marie Catalano.
Thank you. If you don't mind, we will have reports next. Will you take up the meeting for a second?
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, I have to step out for a minute. I'll be back.
All right, reports, district policy, Mrs. Islandberg?
Our next meeting is June 20. There was no meeting in May. We will have an update at the next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, can you slide right into the BCIU?
Yes, I can. We have the honor of celebrating both our Project Search graduates as well as community members in two separate events for the BCIU. Project Search is a program that allows for internships throughout the county. Our county government is actually a huge supporter of this program, and we have students come in and they take different jobs at different offices, like data entry and filing and scanning and all kinds of different tasks. Some of them have been hired permanently by the district or by the county. Others go on to apply for jobs at other businesses. So that was really wonderful to be able to witness that graduation. We have also, BCIU, Bucks County Intermediate Unit, also celebrated our community volunteers in an award ceremony, which was really wonderful as well. Thank you.
Thank you. PSBA, Mr. Sadowski?
Registration is open for the PASA PSBA Student Leadership Conference at Kalhari in the Poconos. The dates are October 15 through 17. That's just 123 days, 1 hour 57 minutes away, so make your plans now. Attendees can also sign up for a pre-conference event, safe and sound, improving school safety and school mental health, very important topics. Lots of great articles that I've enjoyed this week about the, you know, declared unconstitutional state funding formula, how teachers are being encouraged to use AI in the classroom, let it steamroll all of us, and lots of other great things. So if you're not subscribed, fellow board members to the Morning Brief, there's lots of great articles in there, but I will curtail that this time.
Did anybody else have any other questions or comments? Oh, great. Oh, I was getting excited. All right. Mr. Sadowski, CEA?
CEF. I attended the final Centennial Education Foundation monthly board meeting of the school year held today at William Tennant. CEF is actively interviewing candidates for their executive director position, so more news on that hopefully in short order. The winner of the 2023 graduation VIP ticket raffle was Ashley Ortiz, so congrats to her and her family and guests. The third annual Bruce Beaton Memorial Golf Outing Benefit is coming up Monday at Spring Mill Country Club. You can still sign up and register and learn more at centennialef.org. And coming up this fall, little teaser, a new event to raise money for CEF that they will use to support educational programs for our students, a murder mystery. That's going to be pretty cool, so definitely stay tuned for details on that. Always more interesting stuff coming from CEF.
12.5 Legislative Council, Mrs. Islandberg?
I'm going to keep this short. We are expecting 10 more sessions from the State Senate and nine more sessions from the House in June, so we'll have more information coming next, next meeting. But I wanted to point out that there are currently programs being presented to encourage certification of more teachers. House Bill 688 offers scholarships with up to $7,000 per year with a maximum of a four-year program to encourage students within PA state schools to become certified to teach primary or secondary schools. This has currently been sent to the Senate for approval.
Thank you. Thank you. Madam Buck, Institute of Technology Executive Council, President, Mr. Goddison, please.
Thank you. First, I wanted to just mention that the four superintendents and the four business directors from the sending school district were very much appreciated in the support and the help in getting to the final budget for MBIT. That budget was approved by the board at MBIT last night unanimously. So all that is going forward, and thank you for approving the budget here as well. The big things that's going on besides that was we had graduation last Monday, which took place right here at William Tennant High School. It was very well-run, very smoothly, so again, thank you for that support of hosting the graduation for MBIT. With that, there were seven students from Centennial that received scholarships, and I do think that we should mention them here tonight. They were in various programs. The students were Austin Bilisario, Aurelius Roman, Tyler Dennis, Ryan Hernandez Velazquez, Tolia Lehman, Cassidy Iskodoro, and finally, Reina Samorosa Martinez. They all received scholarships. Other pieces going on at MBIT is we, over the summer, we will change the system so they will take an access card to get in and out of the building, and we will have some sort of public auction, municipal, you know, for surplus unusable materials at MBIT. And lastly, Mr. Lyden has been appointed as the PSBA delegate for November.
Wonderful, thank you. 13.1 Communications. We have been through communications, and we, I have none to report right now. Additional public comments, I think we had, most people signed up previously, so we'll eliminate that. Schedule of Board Meetings, Mrs. Brancato?
Madam President, if I may step in as the understudy this evening, I'll read the calendar of events.
Yes, please.
Sure. Monday, July 10 at 5:30 PM, MBIT Executive Council Meeting at MBIT. Tuesday, July 18, 7 PM, BCIU Board Meeting, BCIU Boardroom. Monday, August 15, 5:30 PM, MBIT Executive Council Meeting at MBIT. Tuesday, August 15 at 7 PM, BCIU Board Meeting at BCIU Boardroom. Tuesday, August 15, 7 PM, also working, work session slash regular board meeting here in the boardroom. Thursday, August 24, first day of school for our students in Centennial. Tuesday, September 12, 7 PM, work session slash regular board meeting here in the boardroom.
Thank you. The next item would be the adjournment, but before we adjourn, as you all know, we have the month of July off. But during that month, we have Mrs. Crossen, Mr. Gindhart, Mr. Martin, and myself will be working during that month on a project of a school district. So for all of you that have come tonight, we thank you. We thank you for your input, we thank you for your concern, and I hope that we're doing the best thing for your child. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Madam President, can I just, I had a couple more pieces that I've forgotten from MBIT. I did want to mention that 92% of our students have either been proficient or advanced in their certification and in acting. The other piece is that there are 1,584 students that have gotten certifications. That is 400 students more than last year. So that is the number of certifications that students are holding at MBIT, which is incredible. The other piece, even with the budget increasing, next... The other piece, even with the budget increasing, next year, there will be more students at MBIT than this current year.
Correct. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion? Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Just one time, meeting's over. Thank you.